Okay, aloha, everyone, and welcome to the February 13th, 2025 meeting of the Neighborhood Board Five Diamond Head Couple Hulu St. Louis Heights. I am Winston Welch, your chair for this evening, and I think we're going to have some folks dribbling in. The vogue might make people slow tonight. Did you see how thick it is out there? Anyway, welcome to everybody who's here in person and online. And I would ask, if you have any questions, go to our Google website, which is honolulu.gov/nc o. You can see a lot of the meeting materials there, past meeting minutes, agendas, resolutions, and so forth, as well as, you know, sort of decorum and that sort of thing. With that, I would like to start with our Honolulu Fire Department. And I do have a message from Honolulu Fire Department, too, but they may be covering that here. So if you are here, please just take your weight.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Aloha. My name is Ellen Tanaka. I'm the fire captain here at the Waikiki Fire Station on Engine Seven, Second Platoon. For today, we have firefighter one Sean Ferguson reading off our stats for January and also our safety tip for February.
Good evening, firefighter one Sean Ferguson. So incident statistics below confirmed number of incidents in the Neighborhood Board's geographical area for the previous month. For more details on the incidents and related mapping information, please visit the fire response map on our HFD website at fire.honolulu.gov under the News and Info tab. Should you have any questions, please email the Honolulu Fire Department's Public Affairs and Media Liaison at hfd and hb@honolulu.gov. So incident statistics for January 2025, fires, one structure fire, zero wildland or brush, four nuisance fires. This includes rubbish fires outside a structure or vehicle, zero cooking, eight activated alarms, no fire. Emergencies, there were 63 medical emergencies, three motor vehicle collision with pedestrian, five motor vehicle crash slash collisions, three mountain rescues, zero ocean rescues, and one hazardous materials incident. This month's fire safety tips and announcements are regards to power outages. Here are a few ways you and your family can be prepared. Preparing your supplies, ensuring your flashlights, radios, et cetera, containing batteries that are charged. Don't forget to charge extra batteries. Prepare your family. Check in with family members. If anyone relies on medical devices requiring power, ensure you plan ahead of time. Prepare your food and water. Set your fridge and freezer to the coldest settings. Keep them closed as much as possible during an outage. Fill up water containers for drinking and other needs. Protect your electronics. Unplug unnecessary electronics to prevent damage for power surges. Never touch down power lines. Always assume lines are energized and dangerous. For more safety tips, you can visit honolulu.gov backslash D E M to learn more about power outages at Hawaiianelectric.com/stormcenter. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Honolulu Fire Department in person or online? Yeah, so basically, I think from the fire captain, from Mr. Tanaka, then he did suggest that if we have issues, again, it's there's a fire response map on the website for the fire department, and that can show us exactly where the fires are. I think one of the questions that we have had is, is there some sort of contingency or planning or gathering of folks that have jurisdiction over the Diamond Head State Monument adjacent areas and see if there are fire plan for brush fires and evacuation routes and that sort of thing that you're aware of from your perspective at Honolulu Fire Department?
No, nothing specific as far as I'm aware of. I can bring that question up with my department and open an answer for you next one.
And I think that was the reason why we've had that, you know, ongoing agenda item was, you know, there's open campfires there right now and just the dangers of that. And so we wanted to see if there's sort of some coherent response or planning or whatnot that would obviously affect this neighborhood. So I appreciate you passing that along.
Your question regards to basically fires on the Diamond Head slopes, is that your question?
Correct.
Basically, if there's a fire or sign of smoke, odor of smoke, then basically 911 would be called, and we will respond out there, investigate, and take appropriate actions for that type of incident. Is that what you're looking for or wondering?
Well, yes, but also is there, what is the plan for to prevent those fires in the first place? There's a lot of encampments there, and so it's probably a question that's more for the mayor and the governor's office to work to try and find out how we can, you know, not have the illegal fires on the obviously illegal on Diamond Head and making the whole neighborhood safer for you, for everybody.
Right, right. Yeah, there's a lot of homeless encampments there. My understanding is that on the slope side of Diamond Head, that would be DLNR and everything else below that would be state and city. And those would be, I think, best directed towards them as far as prevention or mitigation for that type of situations.
Okay, we'll follow up with them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And seeing no other questions, we'll go to our police officers in District Six, Waikiki, Kapielaunipark, Diamond Head.
Hi, good afternoon. Lieutenant Oono with District Six, Waikiki Detail. I'll go with some stats for January and the previous month. January, we had six robberies. The previous month was two burglaries, eight. Previous month was 10. Thefts 128, previous month 98. U M Vs 23, previous month 14. Assaults 32, previous month six. Sex crimes, four, previous month two. Excuse me, bike skateboard on sidewalk, two citations. Previous month was zero. Speeding, we had 19 citations, 21 the previous month. Excuse me, parking, 1,972 in the previous month, 21, 35. Sorry, loud mufflers, three. The previous month, zero. Park closures, we had 75 citations, 20 arrests. The previous month was 102 citations and 13 arrests. Total cost per service was 3,142. The previous month was 4,320. And that's all that.
Thank you. And are there questions for Honolulu Police Department, District Six, in person? And I think.
Thank you. So there was a police officer named Nakamura who was watching pool A circle on Leahie area because there's a lot of cars speeding there. And he came several days, and of course, they were very well behaved while he was there. And then that was earlier in the month than day before yesterday, I was waiting at the crosswalk, and this car was coming kind of fast, so I waited, and this guy flipped me off. He didn't even stop. It was really rude. But that's the kind of thing we're seeing on our streets, so we would like some kind of help with traffic calming devices. I've seen on some streets where they have the blinking lights that come on for pedestrians, but we would appreciate some kind of help in that area. But as long as the police officers are going to be around, the public is going to be very well behaved. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of always the case. Whenever we're around, they're going to fall bit lost. But I'll let our community policing team know about that, all those lights and everything. I'm not sure if that's something we do, but maybe they can inquire and find out who does it.
Thank you. We had, I had a question as well. This some folks from the community met with Department of Transportation Services about a very dangerous curve at Makalei Beach Park and Diamond Head Road on the way, I guess, to the lighthouse or down. Was there any special enforcement efforts that you know of that took place within the last month at that location?
Not that I'm aware of, but I mean, every watch can kind of do what they do, whatever they want as far as enforcement. So there might have been someone on another watch that I'm not aware of.
Okay, thank you.
I can try me a little bit about that, about the Makalei Curve. Lieutenant Shimura sat in the meeting last month, and he passed on the information to the watches that work that area to be aware of that and try to look to do enforcement on that area for speeding and and such about with the concern that was brought up last month. So there were officers that did make checks in the area for that specific violation.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a question, Ms. Mattson?
Thank you, Chair. There was quite a bit of discussion on Nextdoor today regarding Alawai, Alamoana, and Kapialani, drag racing, motorcycle noise, huge disturbances from 10:00 PM through 3:00, 4:00 AM in the morning. Is there any enforcement along those streets as well as Diamond Head Road where they also speed with loud noises at all hours? We don't see any present HPD presence at all on these streets for this purpose.
Okay, we, I know in Waikiki on Kalakaua, we've actually made several arrests, especially with those e-bikes and the dirt bikes that are that are driving through Kalakaua. We've made several arrests in the last few months.
This is not according, this is not regarding e-bikes or other mopeds, but they are motors, loud vehicular, illegal muffler disturbances, motorcycles and vehicles, not mopeds necessarily. The mopeds are the problem on Diamond Head Road at the parks.
Okay, I'll let the midnight watch guys know, the overnight officers.
Are there any other questions for District Six officers? Thank you very much for coming tonight. And for District Seven?
Good evening. Lieutenant Thompson from District Seven. The stats for last month, there were 11 motor vehicle thefts, 12 the previous month, seven burglaries, six the previous month, 14 thefts with 12 reported in December, 16 unauthorized entry to motor vehicle reports with 10 the previous month. The total calls for the service, falls for service for the month is 6,079. And a safety tip for the month, I'd like to highlight flash flood preparedness. And I'll read some of this information. When hiking, use extreme caution anytime heavy rains threaten you. The rainfall is far upstream. A stream could flood within minutes. Do not cross streams unless the flash flooding completely subsides. Do not attempt to drive your vehicle through flooded areas because parts of the road may already be washed out. The water may be deeper than what it appears to be. Don't cross if you're unsure. If your vehicle does salt in a flooded area, get out as soon as possible. Floodwaters can rise rapidly and sweep away a vehicle and its occupants. Do not allow children to play near streams or drainage ditches. These areas can quickly become deadly. And if your area is prone to flooding, keep emergency materials on hand such as sandbags, wood, and plastic sheeting. And additional information can be found on honolulu.gov backslash D E M.
That's all I have. Are there questions for District Seven Police Department? Go ahead, Julie.
There is a continuing problem. I guess it does sound, okay, thank you. Yes, and St. Louis Heights, there's ongoing problems with workers at construction sites, parking on the street where it's clearly marked, no parking, and on blind curves. It's a very, it's very dangerous for the bus coming up around that curve. And there's one, when I was out walking my dog, it's up on St. Louis Drive, just above the top of Oswald. And I spoke to the worker and told them it had to be moved. It was not only illegal, but very dangerous, and he could move down the street where it would be safe and legal. I saw no move to do so. He just, of course, said yes. But I'm concerned that where there are construction sites, that that gets checked and those cars get tagged. I can't stay there waiting to see if he did it, but I would like that those areas where there is construction get checked. Thank you.
Okay. If you observe a parking violation, you can always call 911, report it non-emergency, and have officers come out and check. I'll let the officer know to make checks in the area as well for no parking.
Okay, and there was also a chef Roy up at the KCC Culinary Institute said it would be nice to have some enforcement, HPD maybe coming out with some speed monitors or something in front of the new culinary institute. He said he's almost been run down several times crossing the road. He said people just pick up speed at the top of the hill and just race down Montserrat. So he said he would appreciate some, you know, HPD enforcement out there as well.
Okay, will do. I'll put the information out.
Any other questions for District Seven? Have you heard that you're getting a new substation anywhere? Are you still working out of Crane Park?
The Crane Park is our office for our ATV detail. I don't, I don't know about any new substations or, yeah. That would be news to me.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much for coming.
Chair Welch, just a comment. I think HPD substation may be needed along, well, let's see, near Triangle Park on Diamond Head Road to monitor the issues, the transient encampment and fire hazard issues along Diamond Head Road. I know it's a fire department problem, but they have not provided their chart since last April of all the fires that occur from the indigenous homeless encampment. So we need to focus a little more on that, and I don't know if the Public Safety and Traffic Committee can do that, or maybe we should form a special committee for this to work with HPD and HFD on these hazardous issues that could lead to another lineup. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I did see that one at the other, there's a new substation going in somewhere, but it was, I feel like it was Makiki or Salt Lake or something like that. So, well, thank you very much for coming. Margaret? You're on mute.
There's a new substation, or not a new into Honolulu. Guys know that? In the lower level. I don't even think they know that. But there were people walking out of Macy's yesterday with loadfuls, armfuls of clothes on hangers. And so, and I was trying to figure out who to call. And there's a substation there.
Okay.
Mahalo, Margaret.
Questions, comments for District Seven? Thank you very much for coming tonight. Is there somebody else I'm not seeing? Oh, Daisy, go ahead, Daisy. Or Noella, you're on mute, Daisy. Go ahead, Noella.
Oh, hi, hi, everybody. I'm beating a dead horse, but I'm going to report it again. Yesterday, there was 27 mopeds parked along the wall at Makalei Place Beach Park. And it's, it's just getting worse and worse with the weather getting nicer and nicer. And the noise is insane. Is there any way that you folks, I know the cops are trying to ticket them and warn the kids, but they're not listening. Is there any way, and you know, forgive me if I'm being out of line here, that you can tell these mopeds, many of them are not registered, they have no license plates. I realize they don't need a safety check, but I mean, it is so out of hand down there. And they were on the sidewalk. There was five of them on the sidewalk. And this was going on throughout the day, but at the peak of the day, primarily, you know, from about when they get out of college, it's the college kids. And I, I don't like to, you know, categorize it, but it's them, and they're doing this, and they don't care. And they're ruining the grass alongside of the wall there. And also, the lava rock wall in the front has been tagged by the taggers. It looks awful. And I, you know, once again, I feel like I'm beating a dead horse because it's not stopping. I mean, we, the police needs to get down really hard on these kids for doing this because they are ruining that park. And there's a lot of illegal activity going on on the beach, drinking, smoking weed, and God knows what else. But it's, it's, I don't even take my grandchildren down there anymore. And I, they, why can't we go there, Granny? And it's like, because it's not a good place for little children. And that's the reality. So anyway, see what you can do, and you know, there, there you have it. Thank you so much.
Okay, if you see, if you see the parking, please keep calling. I know every, I would say, every semester, there's a new group of kids that come down there. We cite, and it tends to get a little bit better. And then it seems like a new group comes in, they, they don't know, and they park their mopeds. If we cite them enough, they, I see them park up the road and walk to the beach, so.
Is there any way that you could contact, HPD could write a stern letter to all of the college campuses reminding them to remind their students to please follow the laws of the beach parks, et cetera? Because maybe if the higher ups at UH can get a letter, a stern one from Chief Logan and you folks saying, hey, you know, you, you need to school your children up there because, you know, I don't know what else to do, you know, other than just keep asking and keep bringing it up. Thank you.
Chair Welch. Chair Welch.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I fully agree with you. Well, this is out of hand. HPD cannot do everything all the time for everyone. I understand their their people are limited. And I know Chief Logan, and I do heartily agree with a letter from him to the, all the surrounding colleges, including UH and community colleges in the area regarding the mopeds, but I'd like to know where the MIA Parks Director is on this. All of a sudden, she wanted a parking lot in Makalei Beach Park. That would only exacerbate the situation for the mopeds. So let's forget about that one and find out where she is on sending the message to these students that this park is a pedestrian passive park for the people who recreate along Diamond Head, which is a state monument and a national natural landmark. I think as the Parks Director, she was formerly the DLNR Director, who was also a Historic Preservation Officer for the state. And yet, this park, which is historic, is not being preserved, is being desecrated.
Thank you. And Daisy, you have a?
Yes. Thank, thank you. Regarding the speeding speeders, I understand at the Mudita Board, there were about 100 participants going all the way to Kone Ohe. And it seems to be, it's not like every night, but it's like earlier in the evening at like 12 or 1:00 in the morning. So it seems to be a group of people that are doing it on purpose because you can hear them on Montserrat or other places. So I mean, this is a serious they lose control and then hit an innocent person. So I mean, it does, is also another concern for everybody. Thank you.
I also want to reiterate on the night watch officers, they designate a handful officers to focus on traffic. Traffic enforcement for the night being DUI, speeding, racing, loud mufflers. And they tag, they primarily target the highways and the freeways in our district. We can't catch them all and like, you know, like Sergeant Lieutenant Oono said, was that when we're around, they're behaved, and when we're not, yeah, so it's, it can be difficult, but we do have, we do have things in place for that kind of stuff as well.
Thank you very much. Hey, and seeing no other questions or comments, then have a safe month, and we will look forward to seeing you next month.
You as well. Thank you.
Okay, we have some public interest reports and events announcements, starting with our Board of Water Supplies, Kathleen Elliott Pahinui. I saw you online there, Kathleen.
Mahalo, Chair. Appreciate it. Thank you, everybody. We had three main breaks in the month of January, one at 1546 Kana Louis Street and two at 477 Kapahulu Avenue. One was an eight inch, 12 inch, and then I'm sure most of you remember the 24 inch that we just had. That was last weekend, I believe, or about a week and a half ago. And if you see water being wasted, such as a broken pipe, a malfunction sprinkler, running faucet, et cetera, please visit our website at boardofwatersupply.com backslash water waste or email us at contactus@hbws.org, or you can call us at 808-748-5041. Mahalo. Planting on our, round our fencing continues, and we hope to have that completed sometime in March. And once it's done, Chair, maybe I can arrange to have you and Board Member Mattson go off and take a look at it. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Are there questions for Board of Water Supply, Ms. Mattson?
Aloha, Kathleen. It's great to see you again, and I do have a question about water consumption and water usage and water supply. It appears that many 400-foot towers are being built and planned in the Alamoana Kakaako district, and now we hear about more 400-foot towers being planned along the shoreline in Kakaako Makai. What is impact is this going to have on our water supply? And is this why our rates are going up 115%? I guess that's the sewer charge that we're expecting to go up. But what about the water supply? Do we have enough, or are we just projecting for what we have now so we can approve the buildings that are being proposed and permitted, and then have no idea what's going to happen in the future?
Okay, first of all, we have enough water. We review all of those plans that come our way. And Barry and his team are imposing water conservation measures on them. We have a very aggressive water conservation program that we're reaching out to all condominiums. In fact, we have a meeting coming up with the SOCIO, which is, I believe, the second largest property management in the state, or at least on Oahu, in about a month, and we will be meeting with all the property managers. So we're pushing that pretty hard. And again, we do review all of those, all those plans have to come to us. They do not just get a free pass. They do. And Barry's been really good about making sure they're using appropriate conservation measures and low flow. We will also be at the Building Property Management Show early next month. And again, we reach out to all of those buildings, and we meet regularly with a number of the developers that are building a lot of those large towers. And they understand our position, where we're coming from, and then in on water conservation. So that's a great question. And then your other question had to do with, oh, rates, yes. So our rates have, was 67% overall for five years for water. The sewer rates, I can't tell you about the sewer rates. That's Department of Environmental Services. So I don't know if Dr. Babcock has been to your board yet to speak to you, but he would be the right person to direct your comment to. And I believe Board Member Merchi had a comment as well. Yeah, when it comes down to approvals on boards, you really do need to talk to your council member and the Department of Planning and Permitting. We don't have the final say on any of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Just, and you mentioned about, you know, broken faucets and that sort of thing. So in the park across from Waikiki Elementary, as it towards the community garden in the corner, there's a, there's a, obviously a broken in the corner, there's a, there's a, obviously a broken bubbler because it's just a little lake there. Is that something that we would direct towards you or?
Yeah, please, we'll take care of it. If you email me, uh, and let me know about it, we'll call the Parks Department, whoever it belongs to, and we'll make sure they get it taken care of. Thank you. Yeah, just, just call me directly.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? I see, is it Noella, you got a question for Kathleen?
Yeah, I do. Hi Kathleen.
Hi Noella.
Thanks for all your help here and, uh, keeping us informed. That's so lovely of you. Um, is there any reason why majority of the water fountains in Kapialani Park aren't distributing water? Uh, I've gone there several times, uh, recently. I live very close and a lot of them, I mean, many, many, many of them are not working as well as the shower across the street over by the wall. They're not, there's no water. And, uh, you know, I, I don't know, maybe they're doing some work on the lines. I don't know, but I just thought, oh, it's not, you know, can't hurt to ask good old Kathleen about this. Thank you Kathleen.
Well, I'll do this for you, Noella. Right, that's not under our purview. That would be under the purview of the Department of Parks and Recreation. I will take that back to DPR and ask them to look into it and get it fixed as quickly as possible for you. Again, we don't have control, but we can certainly be part of the solution.
Utabam, thank you so much, sweetie.
Thank you.
Thank you Kathleen. And we hope you have a lovely month.
You too. Aloha. Take care.
Okay, next we have from Kapialani Community College Dean Carol Hoschko. I saw you online, I think Carol.
Yes. Good evening, everybody. Chair Welch, members of the board, honored guests. I'm pleased to be here tonight. Um, I just have a, a few items. Uh, one is, oh, I'm sorry that I heard that story that you told about, um, Roy almost getting run over. My goodness, we can't have that happen to Roy Gucci or anybody. But, um, uh, that I wanted to segue into the CIP and say that, you know, the Innovation Center, uh, as well as the, uh, Theater with the wine tasting and classroom facility are nearly complete. And they've been working on the punch list for those. Uh, the restaurant itself, there's still some change orders that have to be done. Uh, so the restaurant won't be completed at the same time as the other two buildings. Um, next I want to tell you about a class that you may be interested in, uh, those of you who are interested in clean energy, et cetera. We have a class coming up on March the 31st about sustainability, renewable energy and resilience. Um, the meeting will, class will meet on campus Mondays and Tuesdays, 5:30 to 7:00 in our Olinon building. Um, I'm going to put something in the chat that will, uh, direct you to where the information is. It's under Good Jobs Hawaii. And the reasons it's under, in, under Good Jobs Hawaii is because the tuition will be paid for people who might want to attend who are, uh, qualified for Good Jobs funding support. Um, if you're eligible, then you're able to take the class at no charge. And that's the first time we're offering that class. I hope that we'll be able to offer some more of that. Um, I did want to follow up on something that I believe came up in a neighborhood, in the Neighborhood Board meeting, and that was a question as to whether, you know, uh, students requested that bus route 200. That is so controversial right now that goes down Alohea Street. The school, um, does not, and neither did students. Uh, the advisor said that they did not request any change to the bus route. So they had nothing to do with bus route 200 nor the removal of bus route nine. In fact, I think they were sad that nine was removed. And then, um, finally, uh, with the discussion that you just had about the mopeds and so forth, you know, I will bring this to the attention of our leadership here at the college, that it is an issue. And, um, you know, she can take it forward to others in the UH system. Um, I do think that, you know, for myself, I do think that, uh, some of those mopeds are actually from mopeds that are rented out of Waikiki. Okay. And then, um, finally, I don't know, Michelle, if you want to talk about the volunteers who, uh, maybe at a later time, we can share information about the student volunteers who are partnering with Diamond Head State Monument Foundation, uh, to do some work, um, at Flanders Park. Thank you.
Carol, thank you so much. I, I'd love it if you could give a summary from KCC's perspective on the exciting, uh, and motivated student coordination by the two coordinators, uh, Miko Lenontine and Denise Pearson, uh, who are partnering with us along with you from KCC for this, a long awaited project. And, and then I'll fill in whatever later.
Oh, okay Chair, is it okay to take a little more time?
Yeah, please do. Yep. It's of interest to the wider community, maybe also volunteer.
Okay, um, uh, the Diamond Head State Monument Foundation, um, did and adopt the park, uh, with DLNR. And we have many students who do, um, service learning projects every year, every semester where they go out and volunteer. Uh, this time, you know, very interested in, uh, doing the work with Diamond Head and DLNR. Uh, so I think the 13th, uh, was the last day of recruiting of, uh, service learning students. So we have a lot of students who are ready to volunteer and help out, uh, with, uh, Flanders and, uh, you know, whatever else, uh, is in store that is, um, put in their direction. They really want to learn about sustainability. They want to help with planting the plants that seedlings are grown here at the campus and remove things that shouldn't be there and so forth. They're really excited. And the nice thing about it is the students get credit, you know, for doing this work, which is a really big incentive for them. Uh, so instead of having to do a project or write a paper or maybe, uh, take a little quiz, you know, because they put these hours into working, um, on this initiative, they'll get the credit for it. And I'm really happy that we are finally getting it off the ground in time enough so that they'll get credit this semester. Michelle and Winston. And they're very happy about it. And so Miku Lemontine is with the Sustainability Group and their students will also be working.
And Miku came to our board to talk about, uh, the initiatives, uh, about the Brazilians hubs as well, if, uh, folks are remembering that from about a year ago. Okay, thank you so much Dean Hoschko, uh, for that update. And we appreciate you coming and keeping us well informed.
It's always a pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a, a presentation today, which was of, uh, interest to a number of folks. We're following up on this. This is the potential development of the property at 3761 Kanaena Avenue. And we have, uh, Rachel, is it Geike? Uh, okay, that's, uh, she's CEO of, uh, Global Island Group, uh, for the Munekio Hiraga, which is, I guess, a potential developer. So I think, uh, we have these materials available on the drive if you want to follow along at home, but also we'll have them here as well.
Everyone hear me? All right. Good evening. Good evening and thank you to Chair Welch and the Neighborhood Board for having me again. And thank you for everyone here who is listening and also who's tuned in on the webex. Um, my name is Rachel Geika and I'm the CEO of Global, Global Island Group, which is a local multifamily and single family residence development. Other members of our team that we have here tonight are Tessa and Eric from the Munikeo and Hiraga Planning Firm. We also have Andrew Foreman of Blueprint 808 and Matt Nakamoto and Jeffrey Ding from Austin Sutsu Mi and Associates. So I have previously presented about the development plans for 3761 Kanaena in October. So I will just be brief tonight and then hand over to Matt for the traffic presentation. Next slide, please. So 3761 Kanaena is a set, single family home that was built in 1954. It is currently zoned R5 residential. And on the next slide, you'll be able to see that our property is highlighted in yellow and it is in a sea of A2 medium density apartments. The R20 zoning that you see on the right of it is Diamond Head Circle, which is mainly not accessible from Kanaena and it's accessed through a different road. And our goal and what we are proposing is to rezone 3761 Kanaena from a residential A2, from a residential R5 to A2 zoning. And the goal of this action is just to align the zoning with everything that is synonymous around it. And when we do rezone, if it's accepted, uh, under A2, we have three options. The first option being townhomes, which is what we presented last time. So we would have five units, each unit featuring three bedrooms and two and a half bathrooms. And on the next slide, um, you'd see how this would render out, uh, based on the environment. So the red line is our property line and based on code, we are required to have a 10 foot setback in the front and a five foot setback in the back. Right now, we would have an average of 22 foot setback on either side. The next slide will also show you a demonstration of how this would look in regards to height and scale. So we would be building two floors to 25 foot in height and the surrounding buildings are about 30 to 40 foot in height, ranging from three to floors, uh, three to four stories. As a second option, we could build market rate apartments, which would just be synonymous with the buildings that are surrounding us. We could build about 15,000 square feet and in a test fit that mixes studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms, we would achieve 25 units and have a parking requirement of 25 stalls. The third option that could be available to us is affordable housing under Bill 7, which would allow us to build 45,000 square foot, a maximum height of 60 feet and maximum units 56 and actually have zero parking requirements. Um, as a lot of you are probably familiar with, um, our community is in a housing shortage and therefore for affordable housing, the city does actually encourage developers and uh, would give us benefits such as expedited, um, processing time, waived parking requirements, increased, um, maximum buildable area. So on the next slide is an overview of our options. Um, Global Island Group strongly prefers to develop the townhomes in lieu of the higher density options because we are very well aware from a firsthand standpoint, also from speaking to neighbors, other HOAs, and being here at the last meeting presentation that traffic and parking is a big concern for the community. So after the last meeting, our team regrouped and what we decided to do was actually conduct a traffic study to see what this development would create in terms of effects. So I'm going to hand over to Matt Nakamoto, who is the Vice President and the Chief Traffic Engineer from ATA.
Hey, thanks. Okay, yeah, so my name is Matt Nakamoto. I work at Austin Sutsu Mi and Associates. My background is I've been doing traffic engineering for the last 24 years. I do traffic studies, design traffic signals, design roundabouts and do traffic signal timing and all that kind of stuff. Uh, so today, as Rachel mentioned, I'm here because I know that the traffic and the parking is controversial, so we're going to talk about it in, at depth. Okay, so you can see on the site plan, hopefully it's not too small, but basically on the bottom left is where our project is going to sit. Um, and as you can see, the roadway is 15 feet wide between the parked vehicles on either side. So the parking makes it a little bit tough to maneuver and that's been mentioned earlier. Um, so, you know, basically we're going to be building up to the property line and we're going to be having the driveways in front of what would be garages. Um, okay, so I see. And I guess also basically that, um, you know, as Rachel mentioned, and we're trying to be responsible in what we're developing and we're not going to be developing something really dense. Um, and therefore actually our parking impact and our traffic impact will be relatively small in comparison. So what you can see here is, um, although the words are a little bit hard to read probably, um, but my tally, I think there's about 700 units in this area between Poli Circle as well as, um, I guess, uh, Kamaaina Avenue. And so we're going to be adding five to what is 700. Um, and I, and I know that a lot of these units, they might have one parking stall and you have two bedroom units and everything too. Um, but basically it's just for us to see that we're trying to minimize impact and therefore, and I'm going to talk about it in some later slides, but basically in terms of the traffic engineering itself, um, I guess we can go to the next slide. Uh, it's a relatively small amount. So, you know, we're going to be generating on the most conservative level, if you can go down a little bit more, five to six trips during the AM and peak, uh, PM peak hour of traffic. So it's really small. Normally from an analytical standpoint, uh, we only really analyze traffic when we start hitting 50 to 100 trips per hour. Um, and you can see on the next slide where this is talking about even what is the threshold for when you actually do conduct the study. Um, and that is really because the impact is so small that you can't really measure it. So, you know, we're not going to study Kalakaua Avenue or Monster Rat because the impact is not going to be measurable in terms of traffic generation. Uh, okay, so we can go to the next slide. So I know that one of the concerns that had been raised at the previous meeting was that, um, you know, there's some people from the outside that are parking along Kamaaina Avenue where the parking is limited. And I think I had heard concerns raised about also Diamond Circle. Um, and I, and I'm showing here the, the restaurants that are, um, fronting, uh, the, the end of Kamaaina Avenue. And, um, and I had also heard that maybe some people from the Waikiki Shell or the, sorry, the Tomofit Shell are parking along, along the street as well. Um, so I guess the next slide will show you what, uh, the entrance looks like. I know this is a little bit dated too because I know that there's Biki out there now, um, but this is from Google Earth. Uh, but basically there is no signage that I can tell or there are no, uh, uh, street markings that indicate that the parking is not, um, available for public. And I know it's a private road, so, uh, you know, I think that if there's a, a concern, then maybe that's something that's got to be addressed with the, um, the owner of the road. But basically, the, the following slide after, maybe two slides from here, uh, you can see, so Wall Street now, which is in, um, the area by Pro Ridge, that's an example of what I believe is a private road where they actually have stalls that are marked reserved and they have, uh, you know, private road. Um, and so that's something that maybe can be considered, but you know, the situation with the parking, I don't think is something we're going to be creating nor exacerbating. And I think it's really just based upon the fact of how many units that you have packed in the area. And again, we're only adding a little bit of units in comparison to the 700 that exists in that area. Um, we can go to the next slide now. Uh, I had heard, uh, concerns raised about the impacts of construction. So, yeah, I mean, basically we're, we're traffic engineers, so we do these sometimes. Um, basically when, uh, a project may have controversy over traffic, uh, we will do a construction management plan. And it's basically when the contractor is selected and onboard, then they're going to talk about what their proposed work plan is and what their potential, uh, impacts may be. We will look at it from a traffic perspective and we will figure out what the timing of when impacts can occur, try to minimize them. And also talk about, you know, where the staging of the construction vehicles may be, for instance, you know, so that the contractor is kept in check. Um, and there's a standard process, you know, we're going to get reviewed by the Department of Planning and Permitting, uh, the Traffic Review Branch, and they're pretty hawkish about what they allow and don't allow. At least, you know, all what is the, the best procedure that we can to minimize what our impacts may be. And, you know, honestly, we don't fully know. I, I, I have heard that maybe some people are saying there's going to be a shutdown and I don't think that, um, we need to get the contractor to know what that is going to be and that's ultimately in the future. Uh, right now, we're at the planning stage. Uh, let's see, should we go to the next slide? So, um, the, so basically this is a summary of the things that we talked about. The traffic impact is relatively low. The, uh, the amount of parking stalls per unit, you know, that you can fit three on there, but I'm going to assume that it's roughly two to three, um, per unit that are actually going to park there. And, um, the existing roadway widths are not going to be affected by what we're doing. Um, and we're going to be taking care to try to take care of our construction impacts as well. Hopefully the impacts are minimal. Uh, and also regarding the traffic from the outside, and that's something that there are plausible solutions. I'm willing to take questions if anybody wants to, um, throw them at. I'm willing to take questions if anybody wants to throw at me. Yes?
So we have a number of senior citizens in our neighborhoods, and so fire and ambulance are called fairly often.
Yes.
That street is not wide enough for a parked car and a fire truck, let alone an ambulance.
Yeah, so the street, the, the current situation is what it is. I mean, you have cars that are parked on one side of the street, and the roadway has a certain width that it can't be changed. The throat of it, either at the back end or at the front end of it, is constrained. And unfortunately, the only way to fix that is to widen the road, which we can't do because we don't have the right of way to control the entire road. And secondarily, you can get rid of the parked cars, but I know that that's a concern. So it's a, it's a balancing act that I know that you need your parking, and at the same time, it does kind of funnel you into a, you know, one lane situation. And again, so from my measurement, it's about fifteen feet. So we'd be comparing it with vehicle widths, you know, what is the, the width of a car? A car is about six feet wide. A big tractor trailer type is, if I have memory of service, is about eight feet wide. So it's, it is true that it, it's not really plausible in a lot of cases to go side by side with the vehicles, which is also similar to the, a lot of neighborhood road designs where they kind of force you into a, a one, you know, one-way situation.
How wide is a fire truck or an ambulance?
I don't know offhand, but if I had to guess, if you look at the lane widths on a roadway, on the freeway, the lane widths are twelve feet wide. On a regular narrow roadway, it would be ten feet wide. So, you know, if a fire truck were wider than fifteen feet wide, then that might present a problem because they wouldn't even be able to traverse within the lanes. Yeah. So if I had to guess, it's probably somewhere in the range of eight to eight and a half. Yeah, but I, I can't see offhand.
If we've got some other questions, if you want to come up to the mic, so people can, yeah, if you want to come up to the mic so people can hear you online as well.
Very dead end of Conaena Avenue, the private portion. So my first question is, are you, what is your concern about the impact of the entire roadway? Is that just your traffic study? Or are you looking to improve the entire length of it? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we're not looking to improve the entire length of the roadway. We don't have control over the entire roadway. We want greater capacity in the roadway. The only way to do it is to reduce parking, which I know that that's probably going to be controversial as well. So the, we don't control the entire roadway. We're developing along a certain amount of frontage within our, our right-of-way boundary.
My follow-up on that, the road is owned by Gary Gatliff, and he is in the wind. He's, we can't, nobody can find him. The last I heard of him, the police came by looking for him. Have you tried to contact him to resolve your issues with, you know, mitigating your the roadway?
I can actually take that question. So ATA is retained by Global Island Group for the specific purposes of doing a traffic study on how our development will affect Conaena, not on the current status of Conaena. We don't have any affiliation with Gary Gatliff. We have made attempts to contact him. I've also met with Tommy Waters' office and City Council. They also are unable to contact him. So I think we're all in the same boat, which is unfortunate. But we do not, we are a private landowner of three, seven, six, one, Conaena. We don't have any affiliation with the road itself.
I, I was just curious because you were mentioning the whole road width, and then we got into fire trucks and ambulances. I can tell you, a fire truck cannot get down that roadway just due to the power poles. Ambulance can. We've already had ambulances come down to the very end. Thank you very much.
Ms. Benson?
Thank you very much for the presentation. I fully concur with the lower density of townhomes. There's no question, the higher density would greatly impact the entire community, especially along that main thoroughfare. But my question here is, you have a very active small shopping center. I was there today, and there are small restaurants that are very popular. There are hair salon, nail salon, sushi place. That parking lot is always full, and the overflow parking would be along Conaena Street. They can't park on Montserrat. Where can they park? So apart from building a high-rise parking garage, we need to consider the entire community, not just closing the street off for a new development.
Yes, actually, what I'm really seeing is that it's a trade-off. You know, I know that, the only reason I brought that up is because people raised that at the last meeting. So, you know, you have to decide as a community, as an association, if you want to allow that, then that is fine. I mean, that's something that, you know, you have to choose which way you want to go with it. I'm not necessarily advocating for it. I'm saying that if that is something that is desired, to, you know, to preserve the parking for, within the residences, then that is something that is plausible. But if it's not, and we recognize that we want to be catering towards the businesses, then that's, that's the choice that can be made. I mean, this is beyond our purview. I'm actually just bringing it up because it was brought up previously, just to say that I'm indicating awareness.
The businesses actually serve the community. These are small businesses. They're very popular. They're highly supported. And unfortunately, there's not enough parking because they're so popular. So you need to take that into consideration and perhaps provide your own parking or some sort of alternate transport to this building. I'm not sure. It bears more discussion. Perhaps we should have a planning and zoning committee meeting on this to work with you, Mr. Chair.
I would just love to clarify a couple points, which is, regardless of our development, these are problems that are occurring right now. And I appreciate that you do see the benefit in having a lower density option, which would be the townhomes. What we, why we even came to the townhomes was because we realized that building a market rate or affordable would just present a disaster for the neighborhood. We are mindful of the businesses, the community. It's a symbiotic relationship. And that's why we actually made sure that each unit by code has actually space for three parking stalls that are within our property. So we would end up with having fifteen parking stalls. So Curtis, if you don't mind, just pulling up the presentation again, I, I went over this in depth in October. I wanted to give Matt more time to present his findings, but perhaps if we look at the rendering, we can actually zoom in. Sorry, if you go to the beige slides, just one more up, one more. All right. Do you mind just zooming in on that? So if you look at the labels, you'll see that you have five townhomes that are slated side by side. There is a one-car garage for each townhome, which is underneath that white portion, and it's labeled. And then within each unit's private driveway, based on code measurements, you can fit two vehicles. And then depending, obviously, on the size of your vehicle, maybe you just end up putting your one big truck in there. But we do have our architect here tonight, and he has done all of these studies. He's looked at code, he's looked at, looked at the land use ordinance, and that is our solution. And why we brought in Matt and his team is to then look at what the effect of this proposed development would actually do to the traffic. And what he presented was that the effect would be so marginal that it doesn't even warrant a study. Like, I asked, can we please conduct a study? And he responded with, there's nothing essentially to study because a study is warranted after a hundred trips, and we've, we've hit the five threshold. So this was our team trying to be the most thoughtful in, in thinking, okay, if we rezone to be synonymous with the neighborhood, this would be the least density. If we stayed as R five, we're actually an eleven thousand square foot lot. We could go ahead and develop two brand-new dwellings on that lot, and we wouldn't have to get any special rezoning. So the amount of cars could end up being comparable, and that's why we decided, let's just make sure that every unit can fit, you know, two to three cars, and that way, we're not adding to the problem.
I know some folks last time were concerned about a post that's in the middle of the road, and I don't know if you can go back to that, Curtis, or not, but is your, in your construction plans, do you have that being removed or, or, or put somewhere else that's not going to be blocking the road?
That's a great question, and our team has spent a lot of time working around that pole. If you zoom in, we tried to align the actual fence by the pole so that it wouldn't be an obstruction and therefore, you can kind of see where that yellow car is on the road. If you zoom in even further, Curtis, sorry, you're driving, I'm talking. You can kind of see in this, like, opaque manner, there is one, that is where that HECO pole is sticking out on the left side of the first driveway. So we tried to blend it in, for lack of better terms. It is an option to also look at pulling that whole pole underground, which is something that we have reached out to HECO for. My other reason in wanting to do that is because I've noticed how low those power lines are actually falling, and I just don't think they're safe. I think it would be better for everyone. Also, I see a lot of people walking along the sidewalk, and they have to actually dodge the pole, and then they end up in the roadway. So I think it would have a benefit for everyone. But again, it's something that we have to explore, and it's not something that we have hundred percent control over.
There's not really a sidewalk in front of that house, though, is there? It's sort of a sidewalk in front of the other apartments, then the house, and then another sidewalk, isn't it? Or maybe there's not even a sidewalk down that. It's just hard.
Sidewalk terminates right before ours. So Diamond Head Sands has a sidewalk, and then the rest of the road no longer has a sidewalk.
And how, what does HECO say?
HECO said that they can look into it, but they would need a large retainer to actually look at how much it would cost.
And who would bear that cost?
That would be us. But they could also explore this after getting a retainer and say, actually, we can't do this, or yes, yes, we can do this. It's going to cost a million dollars. Like, we just have no idea. So we are looking into it, but I can't promise anything. But I do see that it would be a benefit.
And what, what pole does that serve besides that property?
That I am uncertain of. There are two poles that are in front of our property, one by the yellow car and one on the very left corner. Yeah.
I think we had a gentleman over here who hasn't had a chance to talk yet, and then we'll get to you, Laura and Michelle.
Hello, my name is Bill Wanger. I've lived right next to that property for about the last seventeen years, and I appreciate you guys taking the time to look at it. I think the traffic flow is fine. It really is a hard situation. And I appreciate that you're looking at three slots per three-bedroom unit. But I, I have to be honest, there are days I don't leave because I'm afraid I won't get a parking spot coming back. So the parking situation from my perspective is maxed out right now. And one car per bedroom is probably not going to do it. You guys looked at, because I live in a one-bedroom apartment with two people, two cars, right? I mean, this is a common thing. And housing costs are high. People, you know, their roommates are teaming up. So I don't know what the, the financials are on it, but I think, from my perspective, I would argue that the parking, you need more than three per unit, honestly, if you're going to have two bedrooms. Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, I guess ideally would be nice to have more and more stalls, but based upon code, we are going to be providing effectively more than what the code has, and definitely a higher ratio per unit than what a lot of the units have now in the surrounding area. Yeah, I mean, I guess it's just a question of how you really pack it in. I mean, you can provide for every possibility of living. You can provide for a single family that has, has a kid. As is in our case, we have, you know, we have a single-family home. We have one kid, and there are two parents, and we have two cars. So I think, you know, it depends on what the purpose is for that third bedroom. But I, I don't think that it's a common necessity to have four stalls for three bedrooms. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
We can't hear you, so if you have a comment, if you can come up and...
Yeah, it's not, the biggest, yeah, that, that picture, I just brought it up for, for presentation today. It's not integral to what we need. I, I'm acknowledging that I know that the BIKI is there. And the purpose of the image was basically to show that the sign is, there's no sign there to say that you can't park there. Yeah.
Go ahead.
That's correct. Yeah. And then the study that we're working on is, is actually recent. Yeah.
Can you put the beige slide back up there that shows the townhomes? I live in Diamond Head Sands. For a long time, we had a school, surf school bus parked there. And when you're coming out of the exit, you could not see traffic coming down Conaena. So I look at this proposal for the townhomes, wherever it is, and I see that the, as it used to be with, with a single-family home, the cars would park on the grass. They would be off of the road, and that's where the school bus thing is parked. So I see the new proposal for these five townhomes. The cars are almost out to the street. And so when you come out of that Diamond Head Sands, I don't think you're going to be able to see very well if there's anything or any kind of a wall or whatever. But even having cars there, it's going to make it difficult to see up the street. Sometimes the, the guys who are trying to get to work from the apartments up the street, they kind of come down the street kind of fast. The second thing is, with five townhomes there and about two to three cars, you can't just ease off the side of the road. You're going to have to make virtually a ninety-degree turn to get in, and if you nose in, then you're going to have to figure out how to back out. And with ten to fifteen cars there on that surface, I don't care how often they leave, it's going to cause a jam up on, on the road. It's just a tiny little road. If you can get rid of the cars on the other side of the road, that'd be great. You'd have more room. It'd be less of a blockage. But as it is with ten to fifteen cars, all trying to get in or trying to get out whenever they are, it's going to stop the traffic coming up the road. And again, the visual access of looking up the road, trying to exit from that, that driveway is, it's difficult. It's really hard.
Yeah, it seems like the property now, people can pass there. But yeah, if you're going to have to back in, and I, I don't really see the space even to get by between the red bar and the cars parked on the other side of the street, but it might be just an optical illusion.
I'd love to clarify. So what you see with the black fence, and then you see gravel, and then you see the red line. Curtis, sorry, if you don't mind, zooming in right now. Thank you so much. So that is actually a parking strip where the current tenants do park along there. So that's usually not used as a pass strip. Everyone who lives there has probably seen parking, cars parked there. That is part of our property. So in the proposed townhome development, we wouldn't be extending anywhere past that red line. The cars would still be contained within that red line, just in a different configuration.
And can cars pass by between the red line, and if there's cars parked across the street?
So I've been there many times where we have, like, even our car parked in that gravel strip, and then there's cars parked on the left, and then it becomes one lane. And again, I mean, we could just walk away and not do anything with this property, and all these problems would still exist.
And Laura, you've been waiting for a question?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I'm very concerned that what your renderings look like is that you don't have, you are going way out into the street, and I'm wondering where the, first of all, where the property line is, and you're supposed to have a certain setback, which I don't see at all. And I am very concerned always about green space. This is, looks like you're putting in a lot of desert concrete. And I think there's solutions that you could aim for rather than just how many cars can be crowded onto this property. Thank you.
Laura, based on your concerns about the building encroaching on the street, earlier in my presentation, I had a slide that actually showed the site dimensions. And I noted that based on code, we're required to have a ten-foot setback on the front and a five-foot setback on the backside. Currently, our plan actually allows for an average of twenty-two feet setback on both sides. And every single unit is going to have green space of at least four hundred to five hundred square foot. We also plan to plant all green walls along the boundaries. If anyone's walked by now, you will see a lot of beautiful, like, different kinds of, like, palms and teas. We actually want to create that to be like a, a barrier as well. So I wouldn't be concerned because actually the setback would be double what code is actually requiring on the front and four X what they require on the back.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Would you consider a permeable surface for all of that hot concrete on the front of the property?
Sorry, are you speaking about the driveway?
Yep.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Usually what we've found is that putting any green permeable surface under cars just ends up in the grass dying. It's also not practical in terms of dirt being kicked up. So that would be, I mean, most people also enjoy their cars being on a driveway in terms of just surface. So that's why we focused on having yards as big as possible in the back.
Okay, thank you. And I see Andrew Salinger?
Thank you, Chair. I, I feel like I want to point out some of the inaccuracies on the slides, the information, because it throws off the statistical analysis. But I do have a specific question for Mr. Nakamoto. So on slide twelve, it's showing the existing area, and you indicated, and some of your analysis was based off of the six hundred ninety-eight unit number. But in fact, you've double counted the Diamond Head condos condominium But in fact, you've double counted the Diamond Head condos condominium that I'm a part of, which has 105 units for its three different buildings. And one of your earlier slides, you actually accurately portrayed the neighborhood, but you did not do so in this slide. And notably then in the Diamond Head Manor, which is one of the properties that does use Conaena for access, you're showing zero, zero people. And you also don't show the houses at the end of the street that use that, that street. And I guess my question is, because you've acknowledged, you called it a private road. And I'm not a big fan of that concept, but you called it a private road. And you said that you have no right of way to control the road. And we've confirmed you haven't gotten Gatliff's permission. So I don't know how you think you can do this. But my question, Mr. Nakamoto, have you ever done a traffic study for a condominium or an area where the property did not have a legal access to the roadway that it used?
I just want to rectify that you saying we don't have legal access is incorrect. We actually have deeded access that's in the title deed, which you're welcome to research. And this is a private piece of land that is allowed to use the roadway of Conaena, just like everyone else.
Well, to that point, in response to your letter, Ms. Geiki, I reached out to you by email and you don't respond to me. And I would wish that this neighborhood board wouldn't give time to applicants that aren't responding to the community and that we should postpone their ability to submit anything to the city council, saying that they've used this neighborhood board to vet concerns until you actually respond to the things that people are telling you. And isn't it further true that if there was a huge roadway access issue? And if you looked at the end of Conaena Road and wanted to connect that to Noella Drive, who owns the property that sits between the end of Conaena and Noella Drive? Ms. Geiki, you do? No?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salinger. I see Catherine Stanaway. You've got a question?
Good evening, Chair, members of the committee. My name is Catherine Stanaway and I'm a resident of Conaena. I live at the end of the street here. And I live here with my husband, my two-year-old daughter and our dog. And we regularly walk the Conaena, what you're calling a private road. I've actually done a lot of research into, I did research back into 1930. And I found it was actually owned by the Bishop Estate and is not owned by Gary Gatliff. That is a quit claim that is not, I believe is not a lawful quit claim. And so I'm really imploring, I've contacted Council Chair Waters. I've contacted Representative Grandinetti and Senator Chang to try to get help with this issue. I, I'm sorry, my daughter's in the background. I really think we need to fix existing issues on this road before we add another structure to it. We have a ton of potholes. We have cracks throughout, no sidewalks. It's, there's illegal parking all along the public part of Conaena. There's no parking signs and we regularly call the police to actually come out and they do. But the fact that we have to call somebody every time to get somebody to come out is really concerning. And so I just am really imploring help with this issue here before somebody gets injured on this road. Thank you.
Okay, so maybe some issues with clear title of who owns the road. It sounds like Laiahi, honestly, like a nightmare quagmire of that. Daisy, you have a question or comment?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. My question is, what is the length of the driveway? Because it has to be long to be able to service 10 cars, which is between six to eight feet across. That, and also is the rendering accurate to scale? Or is that the artist rendering to fit, to make it look like, oh, it all fits? We need to know which is correct. And also, isn't this in a Diamond Head special district, which you also need to follow certain criterias? No taller than 25 feet, for example? Because you could also rent out the units to college students. So it can be between six, five persons to 30 people living in that townhomes. And also whatever other transportation that they might have. We have to also compound the parking issue and other things of people going in and out and the safety of people that live in that area. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andrew Forman. I'm with Blueprint 808 Architecture. We're the architects on the project. I think I'm probably best suited to answer some of your questions. So related to your question about the driveway distance. So typical driveway is going to be around 20 feet wide. So as Rachel's mentioned before, we currently have a 22 foot setback from our property line to the front of the structure, which is essentially the garage. So I think that answers your first question. As far, it depends on the unit. So it's going to range between 17 and a little over 20 feet per unit. You can park in setbacks in this zoning, yes. And then to respond to your next question, the entire blueprint that you guys will see on the screen is actually a 3D model that's then extrapolated and brought into a rendering software. So it's accurate to 100% scale.
Okay, thank you for that. And so it's, I just wonder then, what's, where are you at right now in the process of the approvals? Or, and we sincerely appreciate you coming to the board and just facing the tough questions. I know you're doing your best to be a good neighbor here. We acknowledge that and appreciate it. I think the roadway has just been trouble for, like you said, long before we've gotten there. And maybe this is where we could ask Chair Waters' office to step in and maybe look at some sort of condemnation. And maybe residents get a sticker that they can park there and say, this is only for residents. Or there's certain measures that might be done, getting rid of the BIKI station and moving it over to, in front of Unity or something. I don't, somewhere else, yeah. But what is your process from right now, moving forward in this whole, in the whole scheme of things?
I appreciate you having me. In terms of process, I'll hand it over to our planners to just explain all the next steps. And in terms of the roadway, we would really appreciate it too. And we're happy to support any efforts that, you know, Councilmember Waters' office might have because it affects us as well. Like there are illegally parked cars right outside our property frontage as well, which make it also hard for us to sometimes turn around as well. So I know that everyone is looking at this development. They're looking at us thinking like, oh, we're coming in with these evil development plans. We're actually part of this community. And, you know, I receive a lot of really, really awful emails from a lot of people in the community about how they're going to destroy us with everything they have. And that's okay to be frustrated, but I think a lot of the frustration that already exists is about existing issues. And this is now becoming an outlet for everyone to express it. So I just want to express again that we're here, we're trying to be part of the community. Otherwise, I wouldn't be presenting you townhomes. It is much more lucrative for me to go higher unit. And even better, bill seven, affordable makes my life a lot easier, but I refuse to do that here. But at one point, I can also sell this lot. Another developer could go in and just say, we don't really care about the community and the businesses. So I'm trying here. I'm trying to work with all of you. And I just hope that, like, you see that our whole team is here trying to explain that. And that's why we haven't just gone ahead and submitted an application for affordable. So again, thank you for having me here twice. And I'll hand over to Tessa.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Tessa Munyki-Eng from Munyki-Hiraga. We're the planning consultants working with Rachel on this project. So there's two main processes that she'll need to go through. First will be the rezone application from, to the A2 zoning. And then, as someone mentioned, it's also in the Diamond Head Special District. So there would be a special district major permit. So there'd be two separate processes that are forthcoming, starting with the rezoning application. As part of the rezoning application process, there will be conditions of approval attached to the rezoning. So that's, that would be decided through the processing with DPP and the council ultimately in terms of attaching conditions to the approval.
And when are you anticipating this?
We'll be filing hopefully in the coming weeks or coming months, I guess. And, you know, there'll be processing with DPP and then also a public hearing. So future opportunities for additional input as well.
The rezoning, you say there might be conditions on it. Will the neighborhood have an input or is it just going to be the city council and making those decisions? Will there be an opportunity for us to speak again to that issue?
There will be a public hearing. And then also when the rezoning goes before council, that's also an opportunity for people to provide public testimony.
Thank you.
Yes.
Maybe you can keep us up to date when that happens, just for that.
There'll be notifications for the public hearings.
Okay, and Ms. Mattson, I'm going to give you the last word.
Thank you, Chair Welch. As the Planning and Zoning Committee Chair for the Board, I'm aware of the special management area and Diamond Head Special District issues. So would this not also include a special management area review as well? Is this within the special management area or just on the boundary? The shoreline, the shoreline special management area.
Yeah, thank you for the question. The property is not within the SMA, so.
Okay.
Special district.
Okay, jumping over to the power pole that is fronting this property, correct? This is a huge air issue all the way around Diamond Head because of the transient encampments that are cutting down Kiavi firewood for campfires. And many fires have occurred on Diamond Head as a result, which could travel in high winds and summer conditions. And you've got these power poles around Kapilani Park, high power lines. And wouldn't it behoove this property to bury the lines to protect the property?
I totally agree with you. As I mentioned earlier, it would be a benefit for us, a benefit for the street. We also see it as a safety concern. The property lines are, the power lines are actually just outside our property and they're also property of HECO. We have already warned them about the low hanging wires. And like you said, it's unfortunate that this is pretty common around our neighborhood. So yes, it would benefit us and we would enjoy that. But again, we don't have control of it.
Apparently it's in the Eastman area, fronting the property. So it would seem that the entire street would need to be improved, shall we say, with the lines buried as they have been in parts of Kuputulu and around Diamond Head during development stages. We'd like to see these lines buried completely so we don't have this fire hazard. So I think that's something the committee might discuss in support for your project. But there are other questions that we would want to discuss as well. So, Mr. Chair, how would you like to handle this?
Well, if you want to have a planning and zoning meeting, you could do that. And these good folks have been very nice to come to our meeting. So if you wanted to do that.
Well, I know it's a requirement for development proposals to be presented to the neighborhood board. But to go one step further, would you be willing to attend one of our committee meetings to further discuss this and see what we could do to work together to provide the best possible solutions?
I'm very happy to collaborate. I'm a member of this community. Just also just for the record, just want to stress that I don't have control over the entire road or the power poles. But I am here to support.
Thank you.
We'd like to get the small shopping center included in the discussion as well because of their needs. And also I think this BIKI blockage might be resolved because we did that along Diamond Head Road. We had one of their rental stations removed in the scenic area. So this is a matter of a community necessity instead of private enterprise. So.
So be looking for planning and zoning meetings coming up soon. Do you have a question? If you can come to the mic or. Have you considered a CPR project?
Four houses, right, and CPR?
We have.
Okay, with your current zoning, you're saying that you could build four homes as a CPR project?
Zoning at R5, being an 11,000 square foot lot, we have looked at just building two new, brand new homes. We would prefer with the zoning to be synonymous because it's a bit out of place. That's quite evident from the maps. And we're happy to look into CPR, but right now we're actually quite focused on the rezoning.
It's a reason. Is it a reason for one more unit to sell or what's the reason?
It's just a preference of ours because the whole neighborhood, it's basically, again, if you look at the aerial maps, it's just an R5 in the sea of A2. So we feel like it would be great for it to be synonymous. Sure. Sorry, I just have this gentleman looking me in the eye. Oh, closer, they're closer.
I'll speak from over here then.
I think you, did you, you asked about a CPR Y4 buildings instead of five?
There are a lot of different options. We can also leave this house as is, do nothing to it, sell it. There's lots of endless options. Our team has been working on this for over a year. We've considered a lot of things and we're here presenting what we would like to proceed with. We're not going to waste your time with options that we're not prioritizing right now.
Could you please define the acronym CPR for those who are listening?
It's a condominium property regime.
And it's something you consider that you're not considering now?
Our preference is the townhomes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So for those who are interested, please check our agendas and we'll have a planning and zoning committee meeting. And maybe that's where we could have Tommy Waters, maybe we could have HECO come out, maybe we could have the folks down the street and see some solutions for this. Maybe on-site walkthrough would be the worst idea either for folks who aren't familiar with it.
I have a question. What is the timeframe for your applications for approval?
As Tessa mentioned, we'd be looking to submit our application in the coming months. And we don't have control over the exact timeline because then it goes into the full process.
Understood. But as far as your application is concerned, is that a month away or two months away?
The coming months, I don't have a date to share with you right now.
Well, I just wanted to know if we have time for a planning and zoning committee meeting to invite all interested parties?
Perhaps we could discuss that offline.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming out, Rachel, and all the folks that were here. I appreciate you honestly answering the questions and folks, if you're contacting them, of course, right with aloha. It's easy to just kind of tap away pretty hard at the keyboard as we have all been guilty of. So I wish all developers were as seemingly open and honest, at least about the projects that you've got and the impact that it's going to have on the neighborhood. So with that, we will move on to the next item of business, which is Public and Community Concerns Event Announcements Open Forum. So if you've got whatever you want to talk about here. I see Andrew, you've got your hand up?
Thanks. Thank you, Chair. Directing it more towards you, but on the same topic, just to be clear. I mean, I wrote an email, aloha GIG, your January 16 letter references that since the last meeting, Neighborhood Board, you produced a traffic memo and a preliminary engineering and drainage report for your proposed townhomes. That was in the letter she sent to all of us. And I said, can you please provide copies to those to myself, Paul and Catherine, where residents are interested in your development, but not NB5 members, who presumably may have been given these documents? Although based on the Google Drive, it doesn't seem like you guys got the documents either. All this to say, and in my experience with the neighborhood board, oh, they're all walking out. Thanks. Please do a resolution. It seems like the resolution is kind of the power of the neighborhood board to set something in a written form that could then go on to the city council. A lot of times it seems like, you know, we could have these vibrant discussions at the Neighborhood Board level, but how does it go to the next phase when the city council? And I think in Leahi, we had, you know, some success with the resolution. So I fully support Director Mattson doing the zoning committee. Thank you, that's great. But can we do a resolution at the end? You've heard a lot of community concerns already. And I just, you know, I would hope it would be more than just the minutes that we could try to kind of use to help move forward.
Yeah, and thank you for your voice in that. And we certainly weren't singling you out for not getting your email answered. That's very frustrating. So, you know, with Rachel, alas, you know, she makes sure to get back to everybody who has a concern.
I appreciate that.
And Laura?
Yes, yes, thank you. I'll try to talk really quickly because I have about three, three issues. First of all, thank you so much for being, your neighborhood board being part of the lay of community neighborhoods. That is where we have four resolutions that have been passed by neighborhood boards. If you know Waikiki Neighborhood Board members, you might encourage them because it's, after all, it's about presenting evidence and analysis for something that would go into our special zones, Diamond Head Zone, Waikiki Zone, et cetera, across the bridge, across the canal. They, I have tried to contact, ask for all of the boards to, and I hope that you will also, Winston, have the Army Corps of Engineers come to the meeting. So Rick Eggard, the meeting the other day, said he had not heard from any of them. I thought he had maybe heard that they had gone to sleep or something. It's a new person, but I will put in the chat, I'll put the older contact and the person that's lining up the agenda for next time can get that person on. It seems like there's lots of rotation in these kinds of, these kinds of businesses, I guess. The other thing is to have Roger Morton or others come onboard for DTS and explain what they're doing also regarding the proposal that they have for the Monster Bridge over the canal. And I think that would be very important to, you know, know that these things are sort of married together. As Roger Morton even said, that they are going to be a marriage. So I don't think that we want to hear the things piece by piece. We want to hear something that is really, what is the full component? And just to let you know, there was a full EIS that was down at, I guess, around the Hilton or something like that for sand replacement or something like that. And nobody in the Diamond, and then the Waikiki Board even raised, batted an eye. And that's a full EIS. I want, I do not understand why the people at the Waikiki Board were not able to do this at this particular time. The third, the third thing, the last thing, is somebody sent me an advertisement, which had a big rendering, false rendering, of a bridge with a full huge tower in the middle of the canal and a couple of pylons in the middle of the canal. And they also, and then they had a text that came after it. And since I can't find it again, I can't give you the specifics, but of the retail opportunities that would be there. In other words, they're trying to get people to buy into getting retail stores wherever. And it would be nice to have them explain why they think that something that's a mile away at Puck's Alley would be relatively good, or something that's a half a mile away to get to Kohiu Avenue. So there, there's, the dishonesty was very much a concern to me. So if you know somebody who was in charge of that advertisement, they should certainly take it back or not put out false information. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura. And please do put the new US Army Corps person's contact in. And then if courtesy, if you can just note that, because I can't drag it up right now. Thank you for letting us know about that. Are there other community concerns, event announcements that we've got in person or online? We've got a quiet meeting tonight, which is, which is okay. I think that was a lot. We got a lot out of Kanaena. And rightly so. Okay, well, let's move straight on to our city and county of Honolulu. We have the mayor's representative, perhaps Anton Kruckey here, Director Kruckey. I don't see you there, but you may be there. Okay, he has a conflicting neighborhood board. Maybe she'll beep him in later. If so, then we will look forward to that report then. I know a number of issues have come up. Arlene said she can't, she was going to beam in here in a little bit maybe, but she was saying, again, we need to have a meeting with the mayor and the governor to address essentially the collapsing of the wall at the Gold Coast. This is scary, the seawall between Makale and Leahi Beach Parks. And then just erosion along the coast. We've had issues with, of course, with Diamond Head traffic calming that we mentioned earlier and that have gone over the naditorium. That's been going on since before I was born, literally. What to do with that? So I don't think we're going to, we'll see what happens on that. And the sidewalk is being repaired. So that was just from the agenda. We have Chair Tommy Waters' office. I see Amanda, I saw you in there. Okay, hey Amanda. Oh, you want your name, it's over there. Amanda, do you want to let us, you want to chime in or can you hear me? Okay, maybe Amanda's having a little trouble getting, oh, I see your face, right? Oh, Tyler. Okay, well, Amanda, we'll come back to you and move on to. Well, I know she's popular tonight, but we'll go on to Scott Nishimoto's office. Tyler, okay. Kylie, Kylie, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
Perfect, okay. So I'm Kylie Tokujah, I'm going to be providing the report for Councilmember Nishimoto tonight. First off, Councilmember would like to share that he's cosponsoring his 16th Annual Free Tax Preparation Clinic. It's going to be taking place on Saturday, March 8th, and that's going to be at the Hawaii State Library. So the Hawaii VITA Tax Program and their volunteers are going to be there to help prepare everyone's tax returns for free. We'd also like to note that there are certain eligibility requirements for this clinic, which can be found on their website, and appointments are required. But I'll put all of this information in the chat. Secondly, we want to invite you all to subscribe to Councilmember's eBlast, which is his e-newsletter. We send it out weekly and you can stay up to date with all the latest news and events in District 5. And I'll also leave a link in the chat to sign up for this as well. And lastly, our district overlaps with the St. Louis Heights area. So please feel free to fire away and let me know if there's any concerns or questions, and I'm happy to pass it on to Councilmember. Thank you.
Thanks, Kylie. And do we have questions for Councilmember? Our new Councilmember, Nishimoto's office. I did have one, a couple of things that, I think this is your district. In front of Leonard's, the city put in a, like a pedestrian safety zone in the middle of Kapua Hulu. And DTS said they had painted it, but they didn't. And so if you're coming down that road and you're not used to seeing it there, 100% people have hit that thing hard as a curb in the middle of the road. Could we get your office to ask DTS to paint that yellow for higher, for any visibility? There's a, there's sort of a, one of those orange and white things in the middle of it, but it needs to be painted yellow because people can't really see that it's a curb in the middle of the road. The other thing is, I think Councilmember Save was working on this for about 10 years, but there's two burned out houses on date that are just maybe two or three properties in from the Kamaki High School playing field. So if you just come back Diamond Head a few, I can't imagine how two burned out houses have lasted this long and not been condemned by, by the city. But perhaps if you could follow up on that and see what's up with that. And Noella, go ahead.
Oh, hi Kylie, thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. At the corner of Kapua Hulu Avenue and Wyndham Avenue, when you leave the old, where Taco Bell is, and you want to, you cannot take a left onto Kapua Hulu, you got to go right. And then you come, you know, you're going Malka on Kapua Hulu, and the next street up is Wyndham. And right when you're making that turn, I go, I live in the avenues. Right when you're making the turn, there's a big tree there. And the viewpoint from the driver coming around there, there's a yield there from people making the left from Kapua Hulu onto that street, Wyndham. And so when the people are coming up Malka and want to make that little right, and then you've got traffic coming off Kapua Hulu and there's that tree bush there that messes around with the visibility. Do you think your office, with all due respect, could check into that and let the city and county know or something?
Yes, I, I think Amanda, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe this would fall under your folks' office, correct?
Yes, all three of these issues would fall under us. And I apologize, my, my audio wasn't working. But yeah, I'm happy to follow up with those, Kylie.
It's Kylie, thank you, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're fine. Thank you, Amanda.
I didn't know, you know. Yeah, thank you, Amanda and Kylie, thank you.
Thank you, Noella.
And just for clarification, Kylie, because I, I would have said that's probably your district, but is it on, it's because you're talking about the Diamond Head side of Kapua Hulu? Is that why you're saying, is that right? Because your district is on the left side and a little bit behind Safeway as well.
Amanda might have to help me out on this. I'm still learning the exact boundaries, but I believe it's, we just have St. Louis Heights. So Amanda, do you know where that line?
Yeah, so actually, since, since the last redistricting, bound, the boundary change, that area is District 4 now. Date Street, we never had before, but we do now. All that area is, is under District 4 now.
Okay, so that, that fire, that burned out thing, I guess, will fall on you then, Amanda, if you can. Okay, are there other questions for Kylie or Scott Nishimoto's office? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Kylie, for, for coming and we look forward to. You're going to be here regularly, is that right?
Yes, correct, thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you so much. And Amanda, yeah, I remember last, last month, you, you were hoarse, very hoarse, right? You were sick, so I hope you're better this month and we welcome your report.
Yes, thank you so much, thank you. So I do have a few community updates. Last month, you had asked about us looking at Wyndham Avenue Traffic Safety. So we do have HPD out there doing parking enforcement. And then I believe there's an issue with no parking signs that used to exist and that were replaced, but were replaced in the wrong areas. So that may be creating some additional congestion or confusion with parking there. So we are having Department of Facility Maintenance take a look at that and compare maps with transportation services to make sure that those signs are moved to the correct locations. And so the proper parking restrictions can be enforced there. And then for Leahi Beach Park and Makale Beach Park, I just wanted to mention that we, Chair Waters' office, we had submitted a request to Parks Department to open that cattle gate to Leahi Beach Park because we know that the concrete pad had been opened up for moped parking there. But mopeds are currently driving through the park, through the grass, to get to that parking concrete pad. So we've asked Parks to open up the cattle gate, which is actually sort of a direct access from the road to the concrete pad. Parks does want to do that, but is working on having a curb installed there before they open up the cattle gate. So that's something that they're working on. And then I know we are sort of still waiting on an update from DPR with respect to the proposed moped access parking area on the grassy area there at the front of the park. And I have noted before that Chair Waters has stated that his preference would be for moped riders to use the designated concrete pad in Leahi Beach Park. And he's asked Director Thielen to work with the community on the concerns that have been raised. And then I wanted to just mention for legislative updates, we did have several measures pass the January full council meeting. We had Resolution 25 to urging state of Hawaii to legislate or to adopt legislations that would create a universal free lunch school program. We had Resolution 253, CD1, reaffirming the city policy that municipal solid waste landfill should not be located in proximity to underground drinking water sources. We have Resolution 2335 reaffirming O'Leila Hawaii as an official language of the state of Hawaii. We have Bill 19, FD1, CD2, relating to housing, establishing a resident preference in the city's housing programs. And then Bill 52, kind of a popular one relating to e-bicycle regulations. And then just a quick update on the sort of infamous Bill 50 at this point relating to street parades and festivals and other activities. We finally did just hear it this week in Transportation Committee. It was reported out for passage on third reading. So I think we've, many, many, many iterations have finally reached some common ground with the community and the Waikiki Neighborhood Board. And so we, they passed out an amended CD1 version, which is addresses all of the concerns and three definitions that were proposed by Corporation Council. So that one is finally moving forward again. We do expect to hear it for the February full council meeting at the end of the month and hope to pass it out finally at that point. And with that, I'll kind of stop there and take any questions or concerns that you may have.
Thank you, Amanda. I think that Ms. Mattson has a question or concern. Why don't you kick us off?
Thank you, Chair Welch. Amanda, thank you for your report. There are a couple of things that, that are absent. And I think we need Chair Waters' input on this, or yours as his representative. Regarding our meeting, our joint committee meeting, the Traffic and Public Safety Committee, Planning and Zoning Committee, and Parks Committee joint meeting with DTS Director Roger Morton. I believe you had attended that. Where the Makale Beach Park issue with the mopeds and the DPR Director's proposed parking lot for Seame in this limited historic beach park was taken up along with the traffic hazards along Diamond Head Road. And Director will be working with the state DOT Director at Sniffin on some traffic calming proposals or ideas that the community has recommended. But this so-called parking lot that the Director of DPR is promoting is a big part of that and a big part of the potential safety hazards. So what is Councilmember Chair slash Chair's opinion on this parking lot at Makale Beach Park? I know you said the alternative would be Leahi, which he does support. But is this in place of the DPR Director's recommendation? Or is it in addition to?
We're not really clear on what her current recommendation is. We don't know if she may be reconsidering based on all the community feedback that have, has been offered. I know that Chair Waters originally did support the proposed parking area in Makale just as a solution to all of the parking problems that we've had. And I know Noella mentioned it again tonight, how it's just an ongoing enforcement issue there. However, given all the community feedback and the concerns raised about sort of turning it into an intersection, which we understand that Department of Transportation has a little bit of a different view on and would treat it more like a driveway. Because of all the concerns raised, he has sort of changed his mind and is encouraging and would prefer no designated area in Makale and for moped riders to use the concrete pad in Leahi. And that's what we've, that's what he has suggested to Director Thielen.
Thank you. I also have a follow-up question regarding this proposed Bill 4 to commercial. to commercialize uh, our parks with uh, commercial signs uh, advertising uh, contributing corporations uh, that will help sustain and uh, contribute to park maintenance, maintenance. Um, doesn't Councilmember see this as a conflict between commercialization and uh, public park uh, aesthetic and passive enjoyment?
Yeah, I think he sort of hopes that we can find a middle ground. I know that um, this week during testimony, uh, thank you Chair Welch for attending that he stated that he sort of shared the similar concerns about um, the, the visual um, part of it being seen from the roadway or the highway. And so he is taking that into consideration. But at the same time, he is also considering the revenue that could potentially be generated at a time where he's trying really hard um, to oppose any increase of property taxes and find uh, revenue in other, in other ways. And at this point, I think we're really starting to look at out of the box ways and what more we can do um, to generate revenue in other areas so that we don't have to do that. He's mentioned several times the very um, large projects that we are, are looking at uh, for the city in, in, in the millions and billions of dollars. And um, so he does feel um, quite a responsibility to, to be fiscally responsible and to find other ways to generate revenue that don't impact property owners and, and local residents.
Okay, but isn't this kind of a cop-out because you can invite contributions to our public facilities from corporations. But you do not have to plaster the outside of their buildings with commercial ads on behalf of these corporations. You can provide internal recognition. You can provide internal recognition such as they do in ballparks during ballgames. Within the facility, you can provide internal recognition online as the Department, State Department of Parks, uh, uh, State, uh, State State Parks Division does regarding Diamond Head. You can provide brochures to attendees internally with this recognition. You do not have to blight our city with commercial signs on public spaces, specifically within our parks. So I don't believe that this is some excuse just to do this. And I wish our Council Chair would understand that our parks are sacred, just as the billboard law is sacred. It was established long ago by many important people and stands today, just as the US Constitution does. So let's be clear and let's be reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. I think he actually would agree with you and has stated that um, they are looking at those kinds of things and um, it is not his intention to suggest or promote, you know, plastering of billboard type signage. So um, I think that he hopes there is some middle ground to be found. Thank you.
And Margaret?
Yeah, I don't know whether you were talking about the signage in um, Makale Park. Is that what you were talking about? Uh, because we really, you know, we got the big dog and pony show last week about that. And I really don't think that we need to attract any more attention there. It's really a neighborhood park. And also too, I have a question on, is there a cap on the ball parties, is, of parties, is that in the proposal or is it changed?
No, it's, it's the same. There are caps. Um, they're very specific and I'm sorry, I, I should have had them in front of me. Um, it, but overall it does limit the number of street festivals. There is a cap on, um, I think no more than two per trimester. Um, and so it definitely limits them in totality and decreases the amount that we're seeing per trimester so that we're not seeing them every single weekend.
No, that's still a lot. Um, also too, if you're looking for money, you know, we don't need to spend sixty million dollars plus on an elaborate pedestrian bridge. You know, I know that we, you know, the Bill forty six didn't pass or was deferred. But um, you know, I, I know the city needs money because of the rail, but you know, we need to take a look at the reality and even I think the governor is having to scale back on his, uh, you know, his grandiose ideas because that we're not going to have the federal money. I don't think we are. You know, and that's huge. So anyway, forget the bridge. It done.
Thank you, Margaret. Appreciate you. Appreciate all of you. Thank you.
And Amanda, could you, uh, let's see, we got Noella, Margaret, and Noella, did you?
Yes, I, I did. Um, Ms. Zapata, thank you so much for being here and filling us all in. Um, recently, um, they came before the board and discussed their artwork that they wanted to put up in the, in regards to the heritage, et cetera, so on and so forth. We're all familiar with it. And they presented it in a very nice way, which was fine. But although I haven't seen the billboard, one's right across the street from where I live in Makale. I have not read what is on it. But on the Nextdoor app, one of the neighbors somewhere in the Nextdoor world put a picture out there and didn't know what that was about. And some people that did chimed in and said, oh, that's an art project, blah, blah, blah. It's temporary. And so that's okay, you know, uh, it's at Triangle Park. There's another one there. And that's that park where there's all those beautiful monkey pod trees. It's a very nice park, small and nice. And the sign is there. It's big. It's tall. It's nine feet. And it's clear, but the messaging on it, Ms. Zapata, is in my opinion, extremely controversial. It, it's, it, 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 it very sneakily inserts the overthrow of the Hawaiian Kingdom in the verbiage of it. Instead of having what I was thinking, and I would like to say I thought a lot of people would think this. I thought those signs were going to be artwork on the plexiglass. And at Triangle Park, for example, there's those gorgeous monkey pod trees. I thought it would be about the flora of that park. Instead, um, I don't have the exact verbiage, but it's, it, the word concrete is used. It's got a big fish hook. It's um, but it basically says, this land was basically, you know, uh, overthrown and taken away and covered with concrete. That's the messaging. And for the visitors, they're not going to understand what that sign means. Cause many people don't come here understanding the history of this wonderful place we all live in. And I would ask with all due respect that you ask Mr. Waters to please go down there um, and, and go see the, this particular sign. Once again, I don't know what Makale right across the street says. But that particular sign is very troubling, in my opinion. Thank you for allowing me this time.
Thank you, Noella. Um, I, I have to admit, I had sort of the same assumption that you did based upon their presentation. And I actually have asked Malka for an update on those two installations and I have not received a reply. So I'm surprised to hear that they were actually installed already. Um, I promised to get out there myself tomorrow and take a look at it and I'm sure Chair Waters will do the same.
Thank you so very, very much. I appreciate it as well as the rest of the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can add to that, Amanda. Um, I got an email uh, from Marion Cudor to Malka and she says for the uh, Wahipana Leahi Project. Um, they had started the project last week and uh, they're wondering how we can have, you know, good engagement with the surrounding neighborhoods and that on February twenty first, which I don't know what day that is. Uh, at nine thirty in the morning at, just says at Fort, uh, there will be an opening event for the project. I'm not sure Fort, maybe Fort Street Mall, but um, I didn't, I didn't know. It just says at Fort, so we could use some clarification from Oka on that. It says the mayor and the artist will speak at the event. So we could probably look at the mayor's um, schedule. And anybody from our neighborhood board is welcome to come uh, or from the neighborhood, I'm sorry. Uh, and that she just wanted to make the board members aware of that, uh, that on February twenty first at nine thirty. I'll just say location to be determined.
Clarification, Mr. Chair, did you say uh, these uh, uh, signs, nine-foot tall signs are being installed at both Makale Beach Park and Leahi Beach Park or just Leahi at this time?
I think it just says Leahi Project, so I'm guessing it's
The entire area.
Yeah, I, I didn't hear about anything at Leahi Park.
Okay, well, they did not convey the messages or the translation, so I think that would be a topic of discussion prior to any installation.
Okay. And uh, let's see, are there any other questions or comments for, oh, yep, Pixie?
Two small things. Um, I'm still wanting to get the parking back in front of the community garden. I'm sure people are tired of hearing about it, but our neighborhood is very tight for parking as many neighborhoods on the island are these days. And I keep hearing that, well, you can't park within twenty feet of a crosswalk. There's still room for three or four parking spaces on Leahi for the gardeners. Um, because sometimes they will be bringing soil in, plants, tools. And there are a couple of gardeners who are disabled. And um, one of them was even given a ticket one time. Uh, the other thing I wanted to ask about was the showers um, by Kaimana Beach. They um, they're still not working. I just wanted an update on that. Uh, cause at one point in time, people were okay with running a hose and Kaimana Beach Hotel provided a hose and some water. So people could at least rinse, rinse off when they got out of the ocean. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. We, we were actually just out there last week at Kaimana looking at the shower. Um, and it was working, so I can follow up again with Parks if it's not working at this time. Um, Director Thielen had previously mentioned um, last month or the month before that she was here that they have made changes um, to allow for greater flow because we know that that was a, a major point of contention um, when they first rebuilt it and it was almost nothing. Um, but you know, she did say the days of sort of the free flowing showers are over. And so while they understand the need for greater pressure, you know, that they are gonna limit it. Um, so when we were out there, it was improved and we talked to several beachgoers and park users who said that it, it had been improved and they appreciated that. It still wasn't maybe what we would have liked to see or what it used to be, but it was enough to rinse off and washboards and washbodies. Um, so I, we'll go and check it out again. If it's not working, I can follow up with Parks.
Thank you. And uh, just a couple of other things, Amanda. Um, in front of the community gardens as a, as a follow-up in the Diamond Head Community Garden, right now the trash bins that the city comes and picks up are the old kind where people have to physically pick them up and just to save worker comp claims and just to make it easier. Could we get the city to please put some bins in front of the um, the community garden? And there, there's probably about eight trash cans or something like that. Um, the, the community garden recycles all the green waste there, so I don't think there's a need for a green waste bin. Uh, just some, and I don't think, actually having a blue would not be the worst idea because people come by and throw their cans and stuff. But I suppose just gray, if we had four or five gray bins, that would be really great and it would save um, you know, just, I think it's just a wise idea if we could get that done. I don't know why this doesn't. Um, the other thing is if we could get an update from Chair Waters on his understanding of what the US Army Corps project is, because when Laura um, Ruby was talking earlier, she said there's a new person there. So I thought that project was kind of shelved for right now, but if, if there's some new understanding that we might know about, that would be great to hear that.
Okay, no problem. I'll take that back. Um, and then, yes, I know, and I apologize. You know, these traffic studies and, and things under DTS just really take far too long. Um, they have so many of these uh, requests for traffic analysis, but they are still looking at the uh, the parking issue, fronting the garden like we've uh, brought up many times before. I, I don't know, but I, I think that part of the challenge is um, you know, I know we've had so many conversations about what used to be and what is and, you know, how things have changed. And we've talked about the fact that parking was really never legally allowed on the unapproved shoulder. And so I think part of the challenge is how do they accommodate the parking in the area that's been requested for the garden and for ADA um, when it's, you know, technically prohibited by ordinance. And if we change it for that area, we'd have to be looking at changing it for island-wide. Um, so I, I don't know. I'm making that assumption as to probably one of the challenges that they're looking at. But I'll follow up again on that response and see what we can get back.
And I, I know you were listening earlier when the whole Kana Ina thing was going on and maybe we could look at it sounds like, it sounds like Leahi Part Two, honestly. So if, if we maybe look at some sort of condemnation or something and, and as we have a Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, maybe we could feed that information is, as we find that out. But um, anyway, thank you so much for all you do for us and
I, I have that noted. I'll definitely take that back. I think that's going to become a, a larger conversation. Um, so we want to get ahead of that.
Okay, thank you so much. Have a good rest of your evening.
You too. Thanks.
Okay, then.
Question. I had my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't see it there. Is that, oh, Mr. Salander, I don't know if Amanda, if you're still around, Mr. Salander.
Yeah, how's, how's it?
Thank you. Amanda, I'll keep it short. I really appreciate what you, you know, you're very knowledgeable on all these things. So back to Kana Ina, and I appreciate you putting in the comment, you know, about, of course, they know about Gatlap, the private owner. I, I really just want to know, I mean, is the city council positioned that, that you can approve a zoning when the, the road owner is not approving that? I mean, you know, what you just said where it's like, it's so difficult in, to not provide parking on the community garden when previously it was not allowed, even though it was. But now you're gonna just change zoning and let them build this huge thing when the private owner hasn't even come forward?
Yeah, it's a good point. And I, I'm not sure that there's actually precedent for that, but um, what I would say is that it's, it's concerning for sure that, that the road hasn't been maintained in such a long time and we would be although we understand clearly that these problems exist. Um, I don't think there's a question that any further development would add to that. And so we don't, the, the private owner doesn't necessarily need to provide any permission or approval of a zone change. He only owns the roadway and the, and the property does have deeded access to the road. Um, so in terms of, you know, approval for the rezone, I, I don't believe the private owner would have um, any authority there, but I do think it's um, it is a concern, a legitimate concern to be a further addressed through the process. Um, should they submit their application for rezone and should it come before council? And, and all of these issues on Kana Ina Avenue for, for, for myself and for Chair Waters have long been documented and discussed um, with various departments. You know, we're banning cars and road maintenance and maintenance of tulip, African tulip trees at the end of the roadway and all of those things that um, we know are of a, of concern and have not been addressed. Um, so yeah, I, I think we agree with you that there's a lot of challenges and concerns and a lot to discuss there.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about, see that, your hand up there, Andrew. Okay, then with that, um, Congressman Case did send something. It's in our Google chat. And he also did a couple town halls and has his latest town hall where he came to, I think it was Washington Middle School. Um, and talked with folks for a couple hours. Um, and that, that replay is available, I think, on his website. Brian Schatz has been active uh, as well. There's some things there about what's going on in federal government and impacts on Hawaii. I don't think we have Mazy Hirono's office or Ed Case's office or Brian Schatz's office here tonight. I don't think we have Mazy Hirono's office or Ed Case's office or Brian Schatz's office here tonight. He's. And for Josh Green's office, I did not see Ryan Aguilar, but you might be there. Ryan, are you there? Okay, if you want to give us an update?
Yeah, I actually, the update just involves. So I just inserted that into the chat. But I did see on the agenda that there were a couple of questions, I think, about the erosion along the Gold Coast area. And I can definitely take that back to the governor's communications team. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, yeah, and I think that, you know, a good point person for that is Arlene Velasco, our vice chair. And, you know, it's such a jurisdictional mishmash that it's sort of her request to have the city and the state come out and whatever. There's probably overlapping jurisdictions inside of the city and the state as well, probably five or six there. So however it is, you know, coming from the top executive would be probably the most useful ways to sort that out faster. Are there any questions for our governor's representative tonight? Hey, I do not see any. Thank you very much, Ryan, for sticking around. We are like, never with this fast in our meeting before. I don't know what's February, maybe everybody's out buying Valentine's Day cards. More power to you if you are Mr. Stanley Chang, Representative Chang. I think I did see you're here. Angie?
Yes, hi, everyone. My name is Angie. I'm Senator Chang's committee clerk. Just not much announcements, but we did just pass about 40 bills out of the Senate Housing Committee and it's going over to the House. And House bills will be crossing over. Reminder that if you would like to get any notifications on bills, you can sign up for that via the public access room. If anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to take that back to the office.
Questions for Senator Chang's office. Okay, and I believe you put in a, your update into our Google Drive as well. Thank you for that. Okay, thank you, Angie. And then next.
This is Daisy. I have a question.
Oh, Daisy, I'm sorry. Yep, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Angie. I know Senator Chang is very passionate about the affordable housing crisis in Hawaii. But the thing is, besides just keep building, has he talked or even fathomed regarding having the prices lower so that the local folks can afford rather than all the people from all of state who can afford all these housing crises? Take over so that you're gonna completely be short of housing, which is affordable for local people. Perhaps the developers and others could lower the pricing so that more families can stay in Hawaii. Because I think that is really the crux of the matter. That might be a solution. So has Senator talked or, I know he's into leasehold, but he should also consider lowering the prices so that the local people can afford. That might be a good solution. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. He has passed some bills that would put caps as far as how high the rents could be raised and how quickly. So that's definitely something that is on his radar as well.
Thank you. Yeah, and just as a follow up to that, Lesihara is not here tonight, our senator. But he had a very interesting presentation down at the Capitol with Carol Fukunaga, who I don't believe Carol's representative is here tonight either. But it was exactly about different types of how we can get our housing issues addressed at least one way. And they did a, a meeting with Peter Savio, and I don't know if you had a chance to be in on that or not, but it was quite imaginative. And I think Lesihara probably has something on his, on his homepage or Carol Fukunaga about that. I think they're going to be having other talks about that as well. So thank you very much for coming tonight, Angie.
Okay, I'll check that out.
Yeah, it's quite, it was quite interesting. I encourage everybody to look at it. It was sort of a, you know, you, you pay once and then you don't, well, I, I won't even attempt to do it justice, but it was just imaginative and interesting. And Peter Savio is obviously a very smart developer. With that, I would like to welcome our State House Representative Tina Nakada Grandinetti. I think it might be your first time here, Tina, right? Or, okay, welcome.
On Zoom last month, so I made it a point to come tonight. Hello, I am just about one month into my first legislative session. I'm vice chair of the Committee on Transportation and I also sit on the Housing and Finance Committees. In transportation, we passed out all of our House bills. We had our last hearing before crossover today and we did some really good work around e-bike regulation, dedicated funding for safe routes to school. Lots of other good things. It was a, that, that kind of subject matter area was a learning curve for me. But my chair, Darius Keela, is really passionate, so learning a lot there. I'm also on the Housing Committee and everyone here knows that that's sort of my policy background. And I'm excited to share, I did pass an anti, I did introduce an anti gouging measure that would establish limits on rent increases. Didn't pass in the House or the Senate, but had some other ideas more aligned with what Winston was talking about around community land trusts, which are a model that takes housing out of the speculative market and keeps it in local homes in local hands. That, those two bills are actually still moving. And I'm really excited to bring that conversation further in the legislature. And then I have one other bill, which I think is really relevant to the conversations we've been having in this neighborhood board around developments like Kuilei Place that have displaced people living in actually affordable housing. So I introduced a bill to establish a standard for how tenants have to be treated when they are displaced by projects that are financed with state or federal funds. In the past, when tenants have been displaced, they've had to advocate for themselves to get relocation assistance from the developers to get their last month's rent waived. And they have had no guarantee to return to the completed development. So this bill would establish a process that would require the developers to provide relocation assistance, maintain communication throughout the course of the development and then guarantee the right of first refusal, not the right of return, but the right of first refusal on a comparable apartment, unit in the new development. And that bill is actually moving because I think the legislature is really interested in building more. But they know that if they, if we don't do it right, we are gonna get constant pushback, justified pushback from the communities. If we don't make sure that the development is serving the people who are actually impacted by it. So at the moment, that's my favorite bill and I'm really hoping it keeps moving. I'm also on the, a co-convenor of the Working Families Caucus. We're supporting paid family leave along with the Kiki Caucus, which has been doing a lot of work around that. And I'm on the Good Government Caucus. We put forward five bills focusing on good governance reforms, including closing the loophole on pay to play donations and proposing a condom for term limits. So far, only one of them is still living, which would fund civic education in schools, which is also really important. And then some other updates, a big curve ball in my first month at work has been the new administration's executive orders and federal funding freezes. So we've been getting briefs from the Lieutenant Governor, the Attorney General, who has taken a really offensive approach. And from Congresswoman Jo Tocuta and Congressman Case. So we know that we're gonna feel the impacts of federal funding cuts and we're doing our best to try to plan a way forward. And then the last thing I wanted to say is thank you to Amanda. I have a brand new staff and I'm getting a lot of constituent calls and requests for assistance. A lot of them end up being, you know, city matters and Amanda has just been amazing at helping my staff get into the swing of things. And we really appreciate all of her help. She's been super responsive and encouraging to my office manager, Emily. So I really appreciate that. Thanks.
Do you have questions for Representative Grandinetti? It's Ms. Mattson.
Thank you for joining us, Tina. I, I have a question about one of your comments. The return to comparable units. Would that be comparable in pricing, rental pricing?
Yeah, and, and size. And so it would be subject to, you know, the restrictions of the constraints of the project. So it's not a guaranteed right, but it at least is an, an option. And it also, the bill also lays out kind of a pathway for if, if it's gonna be a temporary displacement or if it's a permanent displacement, acknowledging that that may happen. But it also accounts for three months waived rent, waived rent or cash payment as relocation assistance and actual like service assistance in finding a new unit.
Well, if they choose to return because they're obviously comfortable and accustomed to the neighborhood and the community. Would that be a mandate for the developer to provide the lower cost rental units? Or would they still insist on providing the 201H 140%?
They would still insist.
AMI, which is totally unaffordable for a lot of people. And that's why people are leaving because of this AMI situation, which cannot accommodate a lot of people.
Yeah, I agree with you.
So, you know, development rules and people suffer.
Yep.
And we've got to get away from this. And the 201H seems to be the perpetrator of a lot of this. So is there a way to reform 201H?
I agree with you. This is my first shot at reforming 201H by adding on a process to account for displacement because so far there has been none.
Let us know where we can help.
Sure. And to your question or to your comment about AMI, there's also a qualified allocation plan that's created by every state each year to lay out some of those. It's a way to, it lays out the criteria by which li tech funding is allocated. And so that's one lever we can try to pull to address what you're talking about, the foundational issues like that.
Thank you. Other questions for Representative Grandinetti? Yeah, and, and, and it was Community Trust. Are you involved in that discussion as well?
Peter Savio and I talk. He, his idea is sort of like a much bigger, more centralized version of a community land trust that would be run by the state. But there are already six community land trusts in operation across Hawaii. So my bill's focused on supporting and expanding those, whereas his work, like working group study bill was about creating a plan for that much bigger state land trust.
Okay, that, it was just, I hadn't heard about it. It was a novel idea. And, yeah, we really appreciate you coming out. I know it's just so crazy down there right now. What's been your biggest surprise in your first month on the job?
Honestly, how much I'm enjoying it. I'm having so much fun. I kind of thought I was gonna hate it, but I'm having the best time. It's tiring, but you know, it's a four month sprint and I'm learning a lot. And then after that, I'll have time to get back out into the community and go door knocking again. Yeah.
That's, that's great. Well, you're helping people, you know, it's, it's who you are. So we expect great things from you, Tina, and thank you so much for coming tonight and all you're doing for our community. Oh, we got a couple of questions, Mr. Salinger.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for coming, Representative Grandinetti. I don't know if you hear the whole meeting. Did you hear the development from Global Island Group on Kanaena?
I didn't.
Okay.
Oh, but is it about the, the private versus state, city roadway? Yeah, I wasn't here for the discussion, but I've had constituent reach out.
I, I more so wanted to bring up because I know you're very involved with the affordable housing. And I just would hope you would have heard how the developer was basically using affordable housing as a threat against our community of basically saying, hey, look, we could do this affordable housing, have no parking, screw you guys over with a four unit. But here we'll just do this townhouse thing and that's so much better. And that's part of what I've been really distasteful in hearing from. And I just would like you to just be mindful of kind of how affordable housing, we can all agree it's something that has to happen, but maybe not in every area and how it's now being used by developers to try to kind of push through their preferred alternatives on a neighborhood that doesn't really need any development at all. Thank you.
We'll be having a meeting about that later under the Planning, Zoning Committee. And I see Margaret.
I have a question. On your good government, you said that there was only one that had passed through. What was, because we were supportive of that.
Yeah.
What happened? Did everything, like the whole fully commissioned thing go down the tubes or what?
I will say, we made some progress in the House rules to address some of the recommendations that have been coming out of the neighborhood board around. So one significant change is, which was made without any legislative, you know, move. It was just an internal House rule was to require testimony to be made public two hours before the hearing. And, and chairs were also asked to release even earlier if they, their staff has the capacity. So my two chairs have been releasing testimony the night before, which has been really helpful for public engagement. But our, and what other sort of positives? Making a public list of any appointments that have, have been given out within the House so that people can see how power is being distributed and what special privileges are being granted to certain people. Aside from that, yes.
The buy request?
Oh, yeah. And there's a public buy request list.
Oh, good.
Yeah. So those are three things that happened with, like, through House leadership itself. And then the Good Government Caucus was also introducing bills to end, close the loophole for pay to play donations. Propose a constitutional amendment to establish term limits. Create like a robust publicly funded campaign system. And can't remember the fourth one. And then the only one that survived was the civic education.
The condo rules being tweaked. Did you, are you aware of any of that? I mean, their DCCAs just overwhelmed. We needed another.
We had one bill come through, sorry. We had one condo bill come through housing. Most of them are in the Consumer Protection Committee, which I haven't been following quite as closely. But I know that there are several moving that are trying to, you know, make a dent in that.
Well, you know, listen to Lila Maurer. She's really good, really smart and on the public side. And she's been following it for years and then ignored. So.
Yeah, she provided very helpful testimony in the bill that came through the House committee.
Yeah, because that's, it's so big. And it affects so many people and it's just so bad.
Thank you, Margaret. And Noella, you have a common question?
Yes, good evening, Ms. Grandinatti. Congratulations on your appointment. This neighborhood board is gonna put you to task and, you know, with all due respect, please try to be here when we start because a lot of stuff comes down. It's very important. It's a small neighborhood. So once again, congratulations. And I would like to say officially, I do echo Mr. Salinger's remarks regarding Kanaena. I mean, I think a 10 year old would understand if a fire truck can't go down that street, there's an issue. And there's the issue of the fire danger during the summer months as Ms. Mattson proposed. And this is a big issue down here. This is, you're, you're in some new shoes. And I know they're probably giving you blisters as you're breaking in and that's good. They're supposed to. So with that said, I would ask that you pay very close attention to this because Mr. Salinger said a very poignant thing under the guise of affordable housing, that street's too small for something like this. Let's just say it. And I, I'm not against any kind of development, but it just seems kind of worrisome due to the existing problems on the Monserrat and that whole little area, the commercial, et cetera, so on and so forth. So with that said, I would ask. So with that said, I would ask that you keep a real sharp eye on this one with all due respect. And once again, congratulations and welcome aboard. Thank you.
Just, do we not have civics education in high school now?
Not dedicate or not as much as we.
Required. Oh, my gosh. Yeah, obviously, we're benefiting from that now. Yeah, go ahead.
One of the, oh, aloha. One of the things that a guy who lived in the neighborhood said, an ambulance can get through, but a fire truck could not get through there. That's very worrisome to me. I don't know what could be done. Yeah. But about the power lines, if we're too close to sea level, they can't go underground.
Okay. All right. I think that's it. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of your night. I don't know if anyone here is from Jackson's office. Is anyone from Jackson's I Amo's office? Curtis says, I don't know, maybe. Okay, if not, we're going to move on to Andrew Garrett's office. And he, in all fairness, Andrew has a small section of our neighborhood, but they would, they would, don't care if they're small. That's part of his constituency. And I did see Mr. Olds, Representative Olds. Thank you very much for coming tonight and for being so patient. I saw you there a moment ago. There you are. Aloha.
Hi, good evening, Board. Kai Kold, House District 23. I think Tina kind of spelled it out pretty well already. So I sit on the Vice Chair of the Human Services and Homelessness Committee. I am also on health, education and higher education. I'm the Vice Chair of the Keiki Caucus. I sit on the Kapuna Caucus and the Native Hawaiian Caucus. Action's going on at the Capitol, lots of things moving around. But I'll take any questions.
Keiki Caucus, Kapuna Caucus, and what was the third one?
The Native Hawaiian Caucus. I kind of got.
Native Hawaiian Caucus. Okay, do we have?
Kind of fell into that one, yeah.
Okay. We have questions for Representative Olds. You know, as far as, you're on the Vice Chair of the, was it homeless and housing? Or?
The Human Services and homelessness. So they joined Human Services and homelessness together. Last year, I believe it was health and homelessness. And now it's Human Services and homelessness.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, thank you. That's, you've got a lot of important issues that you're tackling as well. And we have a question from Noella.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, good evening, Mr. Olds. Thank you so much. Tonight's meeting is, you know, packed with a lot of really interesting subjects. I don't like to talk too much in these and, you know, forgive me if I am. But do you folks meet regularly with the people of the mountain, the homeless up here at Diamond Head and counsel them on fires, et cetera, so on and so forth? And, and, you know, what is, what is the percentage of when you, when you're going up there? This is a historical state mountain. It's very, it's very safe, you know, in terms of the historical nature of it. But yet we, we, as the people that live upon the slope and the surrounding area are subject to malfeasance, primarily with fires due to the homeless. And is there any way that we could somehow, you folks can work harder and more efficient to get these people off the mountain? Because if anything happens in a bad way like Maui, they're not going to have a place to go back to either. So I would like to just emphasize that your department that you work, and thank you for your communicate, please, please, please focus on that. Because this is a historically, it is the place that everybody sees when they're coming in on the plane. And the people that live here are very, very, very worried about fires because the homeless do cut the ka'avi trees. I live on this slope. I smell it every day. Okay, so please just see what you can do, okay? And once again, thank you for allowing me to speak.
I guess just to kind of answer that question. So the committee doesn't, doesn't go out to do that kind of stuff. We legislate, you know, law, bills to hopefully create laws. We don't actually go out. But speaking as someone who used to do that for the last 10 years, I know what you're talking about on Diamond Head. I've worked with, I worked with the homeless for the last decade before I came into this job.
Good.
I understand what, exactly what you're talking about. And some of the issues historically that have gone on, on the slopes of Diamond Head. But yes, the body is designed to just, we create bills and we try to pass, you know, legislation that can potentially allow organizations such as HPD or DNR or another enforcement agency to be able to clear people out potentially from these encampments. I guess this might be one opportunity to kind of speak on one of the bills that I have that's hopefully, we're going to cross our fingers, make it through finance in the House, which is a HB 943, which is a homeless triage center program. So, you know, the homeless issue is really complicated. There's not just one way of solving it unless we get really medieval and just do something really dramatic. We want to try to meet people where they're at and try to address all the different avenues that we need to, to handle each sliver of the, of the issue along the spectrum. So in this case, it would allow individuals who are picked up with, it's called an MH1, so mental health one. Essentially, HPD picks someone up for erratic behavior, dangerous themselves or others, they're taken down to the treatment center, the crisis center down in Evil A, the Behavior Health Crisis Center. They get stabilized within 23 hours. This triage center would be the next step. So after they stabilize, this would be them going into a little bit more of a long-term care. It may not necessarily answer what's happening on the hill, on the slope there because, you know, we're dealing with a wide range of individuals and how and why people become homeless is very different. And what their current states are is all very different. Some might just need a little bit of housing, a little bit of financial support, and they might be fine. Others might need substance abuse treatment. Others might need mental health treatment. Others might need substance abuse induced mental health treatment. Lots of different things. This bill would just address some of it and give an opportunity for us to not criminalize homelessness, but give them to a space where they can go to be safe. They're off the streets, they're getting help they need. And then from there, we can move them on to more like IHF shelter or something like that. But to circle back, yes, the committee, we don't go out to do outreach. After the session's done, I actually do plan on doing social services again. That's because of my thing. But what we have to do is we have to pass laws to get things like that to happen. And because this is the first session post Grants Pass, I did have some spicy bills that came out that would have specifically targeted homeless in some way, shape or form. Most of them are off the table right now. But that's, that's kind of the direction that our body does in terms of addressing the issue that you're talking about.
Thank you for that. And did you have a question, Michelle?
Thank you for joining us, Representative. I'd like to know, since you're on the, what is it? The Native, the Committee on Hawaiian Affairs, is it?
Yeah, we just call it the Native Hawaiian Caucus, yes.
All right, yes, okay. Are you familiar with the Kaka'akua Makai Community Master Plan for all of Kaka'akua Makai, including Kiwalo Basin and the cultural features that were, are proposed in the master, master plan as well as the park, promenade from Kiwalo Basin to downtown and the restriction on residential housing in Kaka'akua Makai for the purpose of keeping that the last remaining open shoreline recreation area in Honolulu?
Yes, I'm, I'm not, I'm absolutely not a master of this plan. I am a voluntold member of the Native Hawaiian Caucus. So I haven't been very active inside in it. I just, because I'm Hawaiian, I just kind of fell into it. I did see the plan. OHA did come down to the Capitol to kind of display the plan out. I didn't go out to go take a look. But I do have an understanding of what's going to happen, of what they're trying to push through.
Yes, it seems like more hundred, 400 foot towers closer to the shoreline. And the great cultural philosophy is being able to see the mountains, from the mountains to the sea and the sea to the mountains. That won't happen anymore with these 400 foot sky rises if they're built all along that shoreline periphery. Are you concerned about that?
Sure. I mean, I grew up in Kailua and Kailua was, is 100% against the building of high rises. That all happened before my, my time. So that was, I grew up with that. The sense of the community has the voice to be able to control the destiny of the community. But speaking to, you know, this would be a different district from mine. It, I guess it depends on what side of the coin you're taking a look at. Because on one end, you could say, well, right across the street, all, there's going to be huge high rises that are going up right now. So already the mountain Makai is going to be, is going to be gone. There's not a whole lot anyone can do about it. And that's going to continue. So basically, we're salties in Kaka'akua through, I guess, ward proper, the hard use proper, where the current development is, is all going to be buildings. And so it's, I guess at a point, it's like, well, right across the street is already completely encapsulated with high rises. What more are, you know, a half handful of buildings going up? And from what I've heard, there hasn't been. Oh, go ahead, please.
The situation is those high rises are more distant than the ones being proposed. So you do have a distance where you are able to see the mountains currently from specific locations along the shoreline. The other thing is the toxicity of the land. Two incinerators. Now the land is capped, toxic land is capped. Once that land is penetrated from high rise foundation piers, that toxicity will leak into the surrounding area, including the shoreline. And there goes your recreational oasis. So all these things have to be considered. And of course, the Hawaiian cultural interests are first and foremost to a lot of us. And the idea that the Hawaiian, Native Hawaiians, the beneficiaries were shortchanged by a deal on this land by a former governor, when they could have gotten equal value from lands that were properly zoned to be able to do exactly what they want to do to this area that can cause so many environmental consequences. I don't think a lot of people want to be part of that. I think they want to support the beneficiaries having everything that they are warranted in compensation for the interest on the seeded lands and everything else do. But with proper lands, with clean lands, properly zoned lands that will give them the highest and best benefit. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Michelle. And maybe we can convey some of those feelings, Representative Olds. So I'll ask you the same question. What's been the most interesting thing, surprising thing for you in the first month on the job?
I, it's really the speed of how this process goes. And I just, like, if I can, I just want to go back and just maybe answer that. I think for OHA, they, if the ES comes back and it comes out that it's not feasible to build, they definitely need to not do that. I mean, as, as Native Hawaiians, they should have, you know, a connection to the land. And if you are going to be doing something that's going to be poisoning the land or the water, they should pull the plug and try to take a cash settlement and maybe go do something else. That has been getting discussed, but I just want to say, I'm not, I don't know what they have accomplished so far in terms of that. But if it is dangerous, they shouldn't do it. Absolutely not. Yeah. But I wasn't sure if I was supposed to answer that or not. But and for you, Chair, yes, it's just the speed of the session.
But there is an opportunity, Representative. It's called the stadium redevelopment area. And equal value could be gained from that area with the proper considerations. So that the beneficiary is going to get the highest and best benefit that they are due without having to go through all of this. And OHA will have to pay for all the remediation. And then where will, what will, why? Why have that high cost on top of everything else that they need to do?
Thank you, Michelle. Yeah, it's a, it's a complex problem. Probably won't solve tonight, but we appreciate all your good efforts down at the state. And also that you're coming from the place of, especially having such deep experience with, you know, the homeless population as well. It makes a huge difference in informing your work. So thank you for coming. I know it's been a super busy time. Like you said, the speed at which everything is done. So good luck with the rest of the month and then we'll see you next one there.
Thank you.
Thank you. I did have a request for who was on our various committees, but I don't know that we have the folks that, do you have a list? Because we made it last month, but I didn't, I didn't get it. I was.
I wasn't in charge of that, but I do have a question about the Parks Committee. We have co-chairs. It looks like Merchi and Decker, but it's Dan Decker. He hasn't been to our meeting, so.
Dan is, Dan has, is cycling off the board and as is Alex. So we have two new seats available in the second district in the middle. So.
Which in Kapahulu.
Kapahulu, yep.
Subdistrict two.
Yep.
And, and so I, I know at our meeting with Roger Morton, our new board member, Kendrick Wong, was very efficient. And I had thought that perhaps Kendrick could be one of the chairs of the Parks Committee because he does have an interest in that. But he's not at tonight's meeting either. So I'd just like to throw out that suggestion.
Okay. Yeah, so we, well, maybe we'll, we'll get the clarification of who's on there or if somebody took notes the last time that made it home. They were, they didn't get the in the minutes and I had them, but I don't know where that went. So. Oh, yes, actually, that's a good idea. We have a recording. We do. So, and we can, and that'll be at the very end of the meeting probably. So good idea. See, it takes a village, folks. Okay, so we don't have, we don't have the, so just, yeah, a note for everybody. If you would like to join this illustrious board or rejoin this board, we have the esteemed former Chair, Mr. West here. All right, yes, we have, nominations are closing, I think, next week. So if you haven't gotten your, your, your self nomination form or whatever it is that we're supposed to do, then get cracking. And also, if you're out there and you want to be on the board, please join us. Go to honolulu.gov/NCO and you'll see all the forms there. I, I am, yes. So we're not going to do board meeting minutes tonight because we lost our form. Julie, do you have any sub-district report for us?
The next St. Louis Heights Community Association meeting will be Monday, March 10. And I, the meeting, I think, starts at seven, but I think they're planning to have a meet and greet in advance or during the hour before that.
So at six?
So I, yeah, they didn't tell me exactly, but I believe that's what they meant, yes. I would expect it to be around six o'clock.
Is that at Kana'ai Elementary?
Yes. Hokalani.
Oh, I'm sorry, Hokalani.
Right, it's there at Kana'ai, correct.
Oh, it's at Kana'ai Park, Hokalani.
Kind, Kana'ai.
Okay, thank you. And let's see for our sub-district. So, Linda, yes, Linda said she could not make it tonight. We did have a meeting with DTS of planning and zoning parks and rec and traffic and public safety. I don't know, Michelle, do you want to give us a debrief on that? That's brief as a debrief. Um, I don't know, Michelle, do you want to give us a debrief on that? That's brief as a debrief or do you want to wait until?
Thank you. I believe that the lead committee was traffic and public safety regarding the hazards along Diamond Head Road, which was the focus of the meeting. And, uh, also as a, an associated issue, uh, the Makale Beach Park, uh, moped inundation and, um, uh, I guess create a proposal, the Parks Director for a parking lot to accommodate them in the park. So, um, what we're actually waiting for now, and, and this is what was, was assured by, uh, the DTS Director Roger Morton was that he would be communicating with the state DOT Director at Sniffin regarding, uh, traffic calming measures along Diamond Head Road to provide safety protection for pedestrians and motorists. Um, especially around the blind turns on Diamond Head Road, which is now, it has been a scenic byway, state scenic byway since 2013. And so we're waiting, uh, Roger indicated that he'd need a month. So we're waiting, uh, for that time to pass before we hear about the outcome of the discussion between the two, uh, traffic, uh, Transportation Department Directors. But I think in the meantime, uh, some of us may be communicating with Ed Sniffen as well to let him know how important this is. But we'll, we'll, we'll have more information.
Yeah, we'll have more. And again, uh, sorry, jumped over that on the agenda, but we had, we do have future requests for meetings with DTS on some other issues like, uh, you know, slowing down speeds in general. Um, yeah, uh, Kapahulu, uh, Montserrat now, um, and some other, uh, on Wailei Avenue at Seventh and, and Fourth Avenue to do some crosswalks or, or something to make that a little bit safer. And the bus issue, yes, which is not on the agenda, but we did get a notice from the Ka'imuki Neighborhood Board. They have formed a Traffic and Safety Committee and they just got this this week. So they are looking forward to having a co-meeting with us as well. So they can discuss Route 200, maybe coming back or, or, or something, uh, to, you know, meet the needs of the public there. So please look on both Ka'imuki and our website when that meeting happens.
We have this bill for on our agenda regarding, uh, the, uh, commercial, uh, what subsidies for our public facilities and, uh, and expecting free advertising from that uh, on, you know, neon signs, whatever on buildings. So we'd, we really like to discuss that if there is any time during the council process to do that. And I know it's going toward second reading, public hearing on the 26th and we won't have a board meeting until after.
Okay. Yes. Thank you for that, for bringing that up. Uh, are there any reports from board members attending any other board meetings? Hi, Rafia.
Yeah, I have something to just question about, um, you know, the park and recreation reservation, how it is work? Because I have some incident happen. I reserve one pavilion in Wahila Ridge on February 3rd. But when we arrive, there is a very difficult situation. Some group actually already occupied the pavilion. And it was very difficult for us, the situation handle. So I just need to know if we apply, we have all the application done, but there is a no sign for the reserved pavilion. Then how can we handle this? And what is the ruleset to actually the reservation spot in the park?
Was that in Kapialani Park?
Oh, no, it's just a Wahila Ridge, the state of San Luis. Yeah, we had a picnic, uh, community, but it's kind of a little bit, you know, difficult situation. Some group already occupied there before we arrived. So we had all the papers and everything, all we had. So we need to call the police and the ranger police. And it is kind of a little uncomfortable situation. I, it's my first time to reservation park. So I need to know what is actually need to do.
Curtis says to email him and he will help with that situation.
Yeah, of course. I, I already did. I just raised the question. So we need to know this clear, clarify how to do that. Yeah.
So please, yeah, please email Curtis. It's, yeah, uncomfortable situation. It sounds like so.
Thank you.
If there are no reports at other meetings, um, we actually are finished with three minutes to go. So I guess we get off for good behavior. And with that, I will look forward to seeing all of you here. Our next meeting is Thursday, March 13th at 6:00 PM. So thank you all for coming around tonight and with that meeting adjourned.